Roscoe Tellio himself.
Well, good morning.
Good morning to you. Thanks for coming.
My pleasure, George.
Now, do tell us a little about yourself. How did you come to be Gordon on Sesame Street?
Well, it's one of those serendipitous, kind of miraculous occurrences that happen in the lives of many people that I never could have predicted, never dreamed of or imagined doing a children's television show. For ten years prior to my, or ten or twelve years prior to becoming a cast member of the show, I had primarily been a theater actor in mostly New York City, but I'd done some regional theater work around the states. And then even did a little stint in Hollywood. I went out in Hollywood during the end of what was, what came to be known as the blaxploitation era of Hollywood films.
Mm-hmm.
In the late 60s, early 70s, I did one of the last films of that period called Willie We convene the meeting at six o'clock. We are now back. And the first thing that we need to do is note that on the printed agenda for this evening's meeting, we neglected to label item six, the last item on our agenda, as a special session item. That is not a work session. That is a voting item. So if people can make note of that, it was correct on the rolling agenda and it may have been correct on electronic versions, but it wasn't on the printed one. And in terms of upcoming agenda items in other weeks, just a reminder that Monday, March 21st, is Ward One Night. And that evening, we also have a work session discussion of a preliminary plan for 6450 New Hampshire Avenue. And Monday, the 28th, we have a tentative schedule of a second reading resolution on the Flower Avenue Right-of-Way Annexation. And the following Monday, on April 4th, is the city manager's presentation of her proposed FY-12 budget.
The fun begins.
Which means April and May, we do budget and potentially schedule Thursday work sessions. At this point, we are up to public comment period. So if anybody would like to make any comments, please identify yourselves, come to the podium, and keep your comments to three minutes. Anybody who wants to comment on anything that is not the special session item this evening?
Good evening. Jeff Trunza, I live at 119 Charbonne Avenue. I have three items. I'll be fast, I'll talk faster than normal. First of all, I want to congratulate the council, the staff, and the chief particularly for everything that's been happening for gang activity in the city. There's, I read the report, all eighty-some pages, and I'm sorry to say, there's nothing in it that I didn't already know. But I'm glad that all the information in there is really getting out and we have some positive impacts. I would encourage a couple of other activities to be looked at. One is, I've talked to the city manager, and I know she's following up on this, but there are some issues about fences and disrepair between Sherman and Lee, and I appreciate everything she's done to get some of that moving. We've had, we have had some activities with large gangs of folks running between the streets. That's a little bit unsettling. The other one, I don't think anybody who knows me will know that I'll, this is new activity either, but I really think the property owner at 7601, 7609 Commercial Strip really needs to be held accountable. And by accountable, I mean that there really needs to be some investments in facade improvements to eliminate the congregation activity. And I think it's really time that we look at the entire street scape in that little section in regard to what it, you know, how parking is handled, lighting is handled, the public transport, hard scape, street scape. I think that would do a lot, if not to the actual level of activity, but the perceptions of activity. So I'm done with that topic. Topic two is stormwater management fee. I ordered some leaf mulch today, and I was very pleased that the clerk explained to me that there is a cancellation fee for folks who order, I'm sorry, I meant to say leaf mulch. I was very pleased that the clerk explained that there was a fee for cancellation of orders placed. And she explained the volume of orders placed and canceled that sort of created havoc with their, with their delivery schedule in the past. And I know at times when I needed it in the past, I've waited up to six to eight weeks for a delivery, maybe because of some of this churning of activity for people who couldn't make up their mind. So I think that's a great thing. I would really encourage thinking more broadly over the next few years about the stormwater management fee in that how environmental impacts can be handled in the same way. Perhaps incentivizing or rewarding property owners who take very big steps to handle stormwater management. And one of those property owners is about to undertake a project like that, and, you know, we're cut out of every incentive program, which I think is an unintended consequence. If I could just say one more thing without, with, true, without burdening everybody. I also think considering, looking at invasive species over the next few years and how that stormwater fees and invasive species and, you know, how people could be either, more fees could be realized or penalties could be assessed over time, giving people some reasons to do positive things about stormwater management. And I think that would have immediate impacts. And I'm sorry I ran over, but I did also want to talk about traffic calming. And the only thing that I want to say is that obviously I don't agree that lumps, bumps are dangerous. I think traffic calming is not a dangerous activity. But if there are going to be limitations on how they're done, that's fine. We can live with that. But let's make sure that streets that are sloped have an equivalent level of protection to level areas. So if I can editorialize, a speed limit sign on a slope is not equivalent to a bump on a flat area. So I think the civil engineering books are filled with suggestions. And I think we need to have a few other alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else list a comment?
Evening, Mayor Williams, council members, city staff. My name is Jim Kuhn, 41 Oswego Avenue. I've been a resident since 1997 and, thank you, and I'm treasurer of the Friends of the Library. I'm here tonight to talk about the importance of library services to our community. First, a couple of words of praise for the national leadership role played by the city employees and staff of our library. As I'm sure you remember, in 2009, Karen McPherson, our children and youth services coordinator, and Alana Natenson, a local middle school student, were named recipients of the annual John Philip Inroth Memorial Award presented by the American Library Association Intellectual Freedom Roundtable. What you may not know is that previous award winners include I.F. Stone and Nat Hentoff. So this is, this is a big deal. And then in 2010, our library received one of only seven grants awarded nationally by the nonprofit Freedom to Read Foundation in support of a readout event during banned books week. Our library's program attracted 129 attendees on a Saturday last September. Now, this kind of national recognition in the form of grants and awards does not come easily. There are now more public library buildings in the United States than there are McDonald's. Yet, in such a crowded field, our library staff has distinguished itself, providing services that are a model nationwide. That our small library has distinguished itself in this way provides a clear indication of just how important it is to have professional librarians and trained staff providing these city services. And to me, it provides a living example of the Margaret Mead quote we're also familiar with. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. But now, look, although peer-reviewed support of our library and its staff is hard-won and very well-deserved, I also want to point out some of the unique ways our library distinguishes itself that make a direct difference to our lives and the lives of our neighbors. Last week, you heard testimony that the library provided the only summer reading program in the county in 2010, and that circulation has increased in recent years. Did you also know that in 2010 and 2011, the county's only bilingual French-English circle time is held here as well? Or that ours is the only library in Montgomery County south of Gaithersburg that is open past 8:00, Monday through Thursday? FTPML is an entirely volunteer-run organization, but the services our municipal library provides to city residents of all ages, backgrounds, national origins, socioeconomic statuses could in no way be provided by volunteers. So I want to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge and thank Ellen and all of her full-time, part-time, and substitute library and computer center city staff for the important work that they do for our community. Thank you to them. And finally, I hope to see most, if not all, of you at the annual meeting of the Friends of the Library next Tuesday at 7:30. We'll have a free lecture by science journalist Richard Harris, followed by a reception. By now, all of you should have received your newsletters. Copies are also available at the library desk. If you can't make it next week, you can always renew your membership at FTPML.org or by using the handy form on page seven of your newsletter. So I hope to see you all next week, and thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move to council comments. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. First, I want to remind everyone that Ward One Night will be March 21st, Monday, March 21st, at 7:00, the day after my birthday. So you can come to Ward Night and wish me a happy birthday one day later. As we did last Ward One Night, we will be having desserts from a variety of restaurants in the Old Town area. So we're now in the process of arranging desserts from Capital City Cheesecake, Summer Delights, the Middle East Cafe, as well as something new, trying a dessert from Roscoe's. I'm really hoping that we can get the baked apple pie pizza that they've been making as a dessert here on Ward One Night. So I encourage everyone to come out and talk to the council, tell us the issues that you're concerned about in the ward, talk to us about the coming budget deliberations we'll have, as well as enjoy the wonderful desserts from the local businesses. Second item that I want to bring up is two properties in my ward. I'm first bringing up 7319 Cedar Avenue, which is also known, not so affectionately, as the Blue Tarp House, because it has had a blue tarp on it as its roof on Cedar Avenue since I've been in office over three years ago. And it's been something that I've been pushing to have rectified. The roof now actually has a hole in it. It's clearly a violation of, code violation. The owner of that property has the means to fix it. It's not a situation where the owner is in dire straits and can't resolve the situation. As a city, we need to redouble our efforts to encourage, both with carrot and stick, for the individual to fix the property or sell it so someone will fix it. I've been getting sort of weekly complaints by residents about it. But that property also brings to mind 36 Philadelphia, which is also a property in very dire straits, even in worse shape. That one's a little bit more complicated. The individual may not have as much means to fix the property. But there are ways and avenues for him to resolve the issue. So both those properties, but in particular, I think we need to redouble our efforts on 7319 Cedar. And lastly, I want to reiterate my support for a green deal for Tacoma Park. I know we're fast approaching budget season and thinking about this. I've been hearing from a number of residents in my ward, the desire for Tacoma Park to retake its leadership as an environmental city. And I think the green deal that's been outlined during city council meetings is something that's appealing to people, and they definitely want to see as a priority in the coming budget. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Two things that I want to mention. First, I want to just sort of extend a note of appreciation to the Parks Department, Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission's Park Division. A few weeks ago, they came into the area at my instigation with the help of the county, of the city manager, to clean out a homeless encampment. But, and that was done quite well. Now, they are continuing to do the work that we asked them to do, which was to clean out a lot of the vines, invasive species that are there. I was just down there Saturday. There's a tremendous amount of work that was clearly in progress. And I've just, that's a good sign to know that we've got an entity here that is capable of responding in a conscientious way to what I perceive to be a pretty darn serious safety problem. And I've had a number of fam, you know, neighbors tell me that this was something that they were alarmed about and are gratified to see what's happened. The other thing has to do with the sidewalk planning process, and I put it more in the form of a, of a open-ended question, sort of a rhetorical question. And that is, is that I'm wondering when the planning process with the community, the New Hampshire Gardens community and the Hillwood Manor community will resume, so that those meetings which residents have been, have been anticipating will in fact take place, giving everybody an opportunity to see the engineering drawings that are, that constitute the plans for the proposed sidewalks. Now that those, the city council has more or less decided that this is something that needs to go forward, I'm anxious to see those meetings get scheduled, and I hope that they can be done. And if anybody has any information on that, I appreciate receiving it. Council?
Councilmember Clay?
I might have to get some tips from the blue tarp person in Josh's ward, because I have a leaky roof, too.
Blue tarps are not the answer.
Actually, it's a leaky window. I got a bigger problem than that. But first, sidewalks. It would be really helpful to my ward if we could get a one- or two-pager out to people about what the process is like, so that people could understand how the city intends to interact with residents in terms of input at this, at this juncture. I'm looking at the city manager, but she's writing notes down. All right. I just want to make sure that I register this. So that would be really helpful, because people will just, they just want to get a sense of what it is. And I keep answering them, and they keep telling me that my answer is unclear. And you can CC it on some of those emails, I know. So maybe somebody who's better at explaining it than me should do that. I think, you know, a one- or two-pager about how people could interact would be, would be helpful. The other thing I want to say is that people in my ward, and probably in other parts of the city, have noticed that Washington Gas is ripping holes in Ethan Allen, which is disconcerting. But what happened is that initially, when we did the patches at that time, Washington Gas had thought that they were going to just dig little pilot holes and then they weren't going to cut ruts in the street. But then, for some reason, they ended up cutting ruts in the street because their plan to, I don't know, do it with bending telescopes didn't work. And so they've cut holes in the, they've cut holes out, which wouldn't be a problem if, at the end of the day, they properly patched them. Because probably the upside of this is that because they went and cut holes in the street, they're going to be required to do a complete mill and pave of the lane where they've cut the holes. However, in the meantime, it sort of turned it back into a war zone. And so my note of appreciation is to the public work staff, who, when they were contacted about this, got involved in some, sort of very specific conversations with the Washington Gas contractor about what an acceptable patch was, what they would do at the end of every day. And if I, if I came home one time before dark, I would actually be able to see whether or not those patches are holding. But I've ceased to get complaints. So I don't know if other people in the council have noticed if the patch jobs have gotten any better. But I haven't, I haven't gotten any complaints since the public works people had their conversation with Gas. So I hope that that gets better. And it was, I saw all of the correspondence from the public works department and how intricate the details and instructions were, and I really appreciate them working on them.
Councilmember Robinson?
I'm just going to say a couple of things about a house in serious disrepair on Sycamore. I appreciate that Sarah Danes came to a community meeting the other night, and that the neighbors along Sycamore, who have been kind of waiting for some decades for this house to get repaired, that, and she is working with the owners of the house and someone from another local nonprofit to forge a, try to forge a solution. And it's going to be a little tricky and a little bit tight financially, because the house is in serious disrepair. And when you take into consideration the, how much the purchase price of the house will be and, and the cost of the reparation, the reparations, the restoration, according to historic requirements, it's a very tight, very tight budget. Part of the tightness is that because the house is condemned, no bank will touch it. So that means it has to be repaired to the point of coming out of condemnation before it can get any bank financing. And I suspect that that's also the case at 36 Pennsylvania, I mean Philadelphia. I'm missing it all over the place then. And if 36 Philadelphia has gone farther than is possible to repair in a financial, financially realistic mode, then you get into a place where you have to think about tearing the house down. And that can take several years because of the historic nature of the houses. So it makes, makes it for a very difficult conversation. I do want to just, again, appreciate, express my appreciation to Sarah for pitching in and, and helping to devise a plan or a way that staff can help in these projects to get them to the other side.
Councilmember Snooker?
Thank you. Hearing all the houses in disrepair reminded me that I have one in my ward at 701 Erie that's been in process, and some residents have contacted the county about it. It's a very unfortunate one of these, you know, a divorce, acrimonious divorce, and, you know, one party was supposed to do something with the house and didn't, you know, all the complications that these can get into. The upshot of which is that the house is starting to fall apart. There's been a large branch that poked a hole in the roof in the back. They haven't put a blue tarp on yet, but anyway, there's a trustee who's in charge of it. Anyway, months go by, nothing's happened. The other thing I want to talk about is I heard some more from people in Ward Five about Flower Avenue. Heard quite a few more residents who are in support of the potential process. I hope, I hope it will actually happen. Particularly concerned, they were particularly concerned about the stormwater. In the recent storms, stormwater is handled very badly on those, on Flower Avenue, and it goes into both creeks. And I heard from people on both sides about huge quantities of water just flooding down various streets. And then the second thing I heard about was some families who have small children walking to school and complaining, again, about the sidewalk. So I'm really looking forward to our discussion in a couple of weeks, and I hope we can move forward with that project. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll just add a couple of quick items. One, I wanted to note that opportunities for the budget game are still available, and my sense is that it's moving into neighborhoods and opportunities for neighborhood associations or folks in local areas to sponsor a game. And if people are interested, let me or your council member know, and all that is necessary to make that happen can be arranged, and we'll see where things go with that. I also wanted to note that I've had contact from an individual who went to Brazil and came back with a, an offer of establishing a sister-city relationship with, not with Jequeye, which we used to have one with, but with Jagwahara, which is very close to Jequeye. And if anybody's interested in working to establish a sister-city relationship, if they would contact me or Diana Kohn, that would be very helpful, because if this is going to happen, we'll need to have some active interest from members of the community. I wanted to note that tomorrow and potentially the next couple of weeks is the, are Tuesdays when I have office hours, and this is when the legislature is at its crazy point. And the, the schedule is always up in the air. And I tend to go to Annapolis on Tuesday to testify on various bills, as I will tomorrow, or meetings with our legislators. So I'm never sure when I'm going to get back. So if anybody is wanting to see me on a Tuesday.
Hello.
Hello. Please bear with me over these next few weeks. I may or may not be back at a time when I have something scheduled, and I hope that everybody can remain flexible and will make something work. Last week, when I was in Annapolis, I went to testify and testified at one or two items, and then couldn't stay long enough to testify at another one. But I came back and went to a, the annual mid-winter networking dinner of the Greater Washington Board of Trade, where there were about 800 people in attendance, and I got to spend some time talking with some interesting people there, including folks from the National Capital Area Food Bank and some other places that were interested in exploring any relationships with the city or making, making any resources available that would be helpful. And so I've got some information on that that maybe I thought, in particular, Councilmember Siemens might be interested in. And finally, just a reminder to my colleagues that this Thursday is Montgomery County Municipalities Day in Annapolis, and I think at least two of us are going to be going down, but, or three. And just to note that this Thursday is likely to be crazy, schedule-wise, since the marriage bill, which is the most anticipated and discussed bill of the session, will likely be in the House Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week for second and third reader, assuming all goes well. So flexibility is the word this week. And that's it for council comments. City managers' comments?
Just an update on two brief items. Last week, I had mentioned that there had been a change order, submitted and accepted for the Public Works renovation project, and I didn't have the dollar amount at my fingertips, so I did want to share that with you. I mean, it was $5,231, and it was necessitated by some elevation changes that necessitated some changes in the footers. So it's basically some concrete work that caused that change order. As of today, the completion date for the project is estimated to be July 29th. As you may recall, it's a one-year contract. So the contractor, who has been just fantastic to work with, is still within that one-year timeframe. So we'll continue to kind of keep you posted and keep your fingers crossed that that timeline holds. I did have some information to share, Councilmember Wright, in regard to 7319 Cedar. I do need to talk to our code enforcement supervisor, who was on vacation today. In late January, there was a request sent over to the city attorney's office to move several citations related to that property to court, because the property owner had not abated those. Did check with the city attorney's office today. They are still awaiting a trial date notice for those cases. I will check tomorrow with Marjorie and let you know what those five specific citations were that have been sent over to court. That's it, sir.
Okay. Any questions on the city manager? Okay, legislative update?
Thanks. Only a week ago, we came back and several of us had gone to Thanks. Only a week ago, we came back and several of us had gone to, to testify on our Tacoma Park alcoholic beverage bill. And since that time, quite a lot has happened. As the mayor mentioned, the marriage bill kind of got thrown into craziness. It has a number, has had a number of repercussions besides getting to see the general assembly play hardball, which isn't a pretty picture. It did disrupt a lot of the consideration of the budget process. So a number of budget bills and agreements related to pensions and amounts that come back to counties and that kind of thing have been delayed and probably off a couple of weeks. And so that's, that's had repercussions across the state in terms of people getting a good sense of what kind of funds they might be able to get from the state legislature in the coming year. And I just want you to recognize that that's affecting us as well as just about everyone else in, in Maryland. The, the other thing that happened last week was that in a bit of a surprise move, our alcoholic beverage bill seemed to be challenged. And our District 20 representatives, who all co-sponsored the bill, are working hard to ensure that there's local courtesy for them and for the Montgomery delegation that supported the bill. I'm assuming that they'll be successful. It sounds like they're determined to, to pull that through for us. As the mayor mentioned, there's a number of items coming up and I'm not necessarily sure all of the different things that you'll be testifying on, but I know you'll be meeting with Sheila Hickson and a number of other folks on House Bill 1048, which is the removal of the exemption from personal property taxes for financial institutions. There's mixed signals on if that's going to be able to be successful this year, but it sounds like there'll be a good discussion tomorrow to get a better sense of that. Clearly, there's a lot of interest and it's, it's nice to see, you know, that, that it's something that may very well move forward either this year or next year, but in a successful way. Tomorrow also, I guess you're going to be testifying on behalf of Senator Raskin's bill related to highway, signs along highways.
Yes.
And the opportunity for municipalities and other jurisdictions to take down those horrible signs that get posted on telephone poles or along state highway right-ofways and then charge back to whichever entity put them up there, up to $25 per sign. So that could be very positive. We certainly spent a lot of time moving those signs, but it's awfully nice to be able to dissuade and get some compensation from, from those that do post the signs that are not authorized. Also, tomorrow, there's a couple of other bills that we won't be testifying on, but have submitted statements on behalf of, one is for local electricity aggregation and the other has to do with the stormwater charges that counties and states could pay a municipality a stormwater fees for their properties. On Wednesday, Jill Rathwaite will be testifying on behalf of the ability to better purchase streetlights and that process in conjunction with Chevy Chase Section Three and Kensington, perhaps? And that's going to be probably a long day for her because it'll have to wait to the activity on the marriage bill, which will be consuming quite, quite a lot of the excitement on Wednesday. I think that's about it. But if anybody has any questions, as, as the mayor said, it's, it's moving fast.
Yeah. And the one that I'll be testifying on tomorrow is the, on the Senate side, the publication of notices that I was supposed to testify on last week but couldn't stay long enough to do since it didn't have, that didn't happen until 6:30 that day. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. We have two sets of minutes for adoption, November 8th and November 15th. If somebody would like to move their adoption.
Move.
Second.
Move by council member Clay, second by council member Snapper. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, we will move to the presentation and public hearing on 119 to 127 Geneva Avenue subdivision.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to bring forward a discussion for a preliminary plan application that is submitted by 103 Geneva LLC. That is the property owner and the developer. The property locations is 119, 121, 125, 127 Geneva. That's in Ward Four. We have Bill Masek, the engineer from Harvard V L L C, who is here tonight to present the application and he will also be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bill Masek. I'm civil engineer for this project. I am also project manager on the sites of the owner and developer for this project. And thank you for the opportunity to present this project to the council tonight. And... One second. I'm sorry about that. It's probably jumping to the next slide. At the existing condition, the site is currently vacant. It's, it's located at 119, 121, 25 and 27 Geneva Avenue. It's bordered by existing church to the north, existing apartment complex to the south. It's front in Geneva Avenue and it has three residential home at the back of the property. This is existing condition plan that was done by survey engineering company. As you can see at the existing conditions, there are three recorded lots currently. But at the year past, there was four existing homes. It was due because middle lot six, it was partially subdivided through the deed reference. So basically, back to 2000, there was four existing homes. And on the next slide, I, I go back and I found the aerial image that was dated April 29, 2002. And as you can see, there is still two existing homes remaining on this property and other two have been removed. The next image, the next image comes from May 2005 and it shows that the property is totally vacant. I just wanted to bring that to attention, that there was four properties and at the existing conditions, we do have four curb cuts that we are going to reuse for the proposed development. This is three-dimensional image and this image shows that there exist in three curb cuts and the fourth is not seen because, due to the trees. But I took pictures of each of the curb cuts, or basically access driveway to this property. And basically, one, two, three, four. Proposed development will reuse all four of them, except the fourth one will be slightly moved to the north to increase side distance visibility for upcoming traffic from the, from the Geneva Avenue, a northbound and eastbound direction. Environmental study has been done for this property and as you can see on this slide, there is several significant trees currently located on the property. The main goal of proposed development was to preserve to the maximum possible extent of these existing trees. And this is a copy of approved NRI FSD plans that was reviewed and approved by Maryland National Park and Planning Commission. Proposed development currently proposed four new homes. It's basically, we did reduce it from the recently proposed five. We did receive some comments from the neighbors and from the park and planning that didn't really support the idea of five homes. And we reduced it to three that more matching the neighborhood patterns that is exist right now. As I mentioned before, each of these homes will reuse existing curb cuts of the street and will minimize disturbance of the property to the maximum possible extent. We do have shown limit of disturbance on this plan. It might be difficult for you to see due to the scale, but basically, our L of D or limit of disturbance comes around, only around areas that are necessary to be disturbed. At the existing conditions, the parking lot is, is the property is vacant, but is covered with a gravel parking lot. And the gravel basically considered as impervious area. It's compared to the asphalt or to the roof, roof surface. And we are trying to remove most of that and restore it to the grass conditions. On this plan, I just also wanted to identify trees that will be affected and removed by this development. Currently, due to the proposed homes, we will need to remove two existing trees. One of them is basically a larger significant tree in a good condition and the second one is very minor. I did show them with the red crosses. And after the meeting with the city harborist, we were requested to remove another large tree that is located near the road. The tree is in, in very sad-looking conditions. It's basically dying. It has retaining wall coming through the, through the tree and we were advised to remove it with this project. I have attached a copy of those two trees. One is that was requested to be removed. This is condition of the existing tree. And another one that is in fairly good condition, but due to the proposed development, we will need to cut it down as well. According to the city harborist, we are going to submit a tree save plan and we are going to update tree removal permit. And basically, we will need to compensate, replace about 11, 12 one-inch trees in order to compensate for trees that we are cutting. Those new trees will be planted on the property in front, in the back. We don't have an exact detailed landscape plan to show where this tree will be planted, but it will be available probably within the next two weeks. This is preliminary, basically, it's a very preliminary tree save plan. I just wanted to show to the council member and to the neighbors that our L of D limit of disturbance line extends fairly further to the back of the property. But this green line that I tried to show on the plan represents the limit of our work. Basically, during 90, 95% of the construction day, construction workers will not be able to cross this line. At the very end, when the project is almost completed, they would be allowed to go and remove existing gravel and restore it to the grass conditions and do some minor grading that required by the plan. Also, they will need to install these dry wells that are behind the line. But per discussion with the city harborist, this way will, will reduce the stress on the root zone or on significant trees that are located in the back of the property. And basically, will give them a chance to survive reconstruction. And basically, there are some other protection measures will be taken to, to make sure these trees will survive. For the stormwater management, we are going to use dry well and we are going to use per milt payment. I do have detail for both of them. It's, it's basically approved Montgomery County standard details that are widely used around the county. And I know they have been used in the city of Tacoma Park. The next, the very last slide that was developed, I, it, it just was developed for presentation purposes. As I mentioned before, the site, existing condition site, it's a, it's a top plan. I shaded in red existing impervious area. It's basically gravel parking lot that is considered impervious. And on the second plan, in blue, I shaded proposed impervious area. And as you can see on the data, proposed impervious is less than the existing. It's basically reducing imperviousness of that site for about 6%. And since there is no existing stormwater management currently present on the site, our proposed stormwater management, we address 100% of required ESD volume for the site. So basically, this development will propose storm, storm drainage of the site and will basically reduce the storm drainage that was flowing to the, to the properties below. That's basically all what I wanted to say about the project. And I would likely answer if you have any question or maybe neighbors' question concerns.
Do we want to do the public hearing and then do the work session with the questions?
Yeah, I think maybe yes. Because my colleagues had questions now, but it'd be good to hear from the neighborhood too.
I think, thanks, thanks for the presentation. And we'll now see if there's anybody who wants to testify at a public hearing on this. And then we'll go to the work session for discussion. So if you can identify yourself and...
Yeah, I'm Richard Payne. I'm the president of Ritchie Citizens Association. We had a meeting in November to discuss the previous iteration of the plan. And some of the concerns have been addressed in the new plan. And I'd just like to sort of inform you of how that conversation went. So issues were for the neighbors, firstly, protection of the trees, which we very much hope the harborist and the city will keep a very close eye on. There are some magnificent trees actually on that, on that lot. There are other ones which are also magnificent. The second is, is the issue of runoff. I guess that, you know, the, the neighbors are just, that, who live below this property on Ritchie are feeling very vulnerable about the runoff from the property because it will come straight onto their property, they imagine. And this sort of technical point about gravel being an impervious substance just doesn't, you know, we, we don't have a technical grasp of it. And we very much like to question and obtain some independent advice or maybe the, the council or the county should as to that, that determination. The third is, and of course, this is also runoff going down to the creek eventually. The third was parking in the area. We suggested sidewalks along Geneva there as part of the development and we're pleased to see that those are, are part of the proposal. The church, you know, will now have to park on the street of a small lot opposite the church. And that's as may be. The fourth issue, looking at the new plans, is the size of the houses. And, you know, 3,900 square feet, I think, is the largest house. Most houses in our neighborhood, even the big new ones, are 2,000, 2,200 square feet. Many of us live in houses of 1,500 square feet. And I wonder what the, what the equation is that's resulting in these large house sizes and whether houses that size are really where the, the council wants to go in terms of planning for Tacoma Park, energy conservation and so on and so forth. So, so the house size issue is new. It looks as though the same square footage of house that was divided among five houses has now been put into four houses. And that's not necessarily going to find favor with, with the neighbors. So we haven't had a meeting on the new plan and we'll do that. And, but those are the issues which, which came up.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just one more thing I just wanted to say is that, you know, Tacoma Park is...
Just one more thing I just wanted to say is that, you know, Tacoma Park is a premium area and maybe the builders should give some thought to the idea that by building quality construction on smaller square footage, they can attain the same price for the, for the houses.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing on that. We'll now move to work session. Councilmember Siemens, did you have anything you wanted to start off with?
Thank you. And I certainly appreciate your bringing the plans to us, the revised plans to us tonight. And I also appreciate the fact that you did listen to the community concerns in the past regarding the number of houses and having a, a home kind of in the backyard and between the homes on Geneva and on Ritchie Avenue. I was also glad to hear, I know it's been a long time coming, but glad to hear that you did meet with our arborist in the city to discuss the trees and the, the tree protection plan. So in that sense, you've certainly paid attention to, to the earlier concerns and I thank you for that. The question of the, the square foot of the, the size of the homes is, is new tonight. But I think one of the issues that has been brought up previously by the community is the, the stormwater runoff, not just after the place is built, the homes are built, but also during the construction phase. As you know, those, there's three houses on Ritchie Avenue that are very graphically shown on your 3D shot there to be downstream from the homes that you're proposing to build on Geneva Avenue. And those homeowners are very, very concerned about the stormwater runoff and the effect it's going to have on their properties during the construction and then after construction. And I wonder if you could, could talk to that point and...
Yeah, sure. Basically, we are going to, as I mentioned before, we are going to have engineer sediment control plan that will be implemented just for the construction purposes. And that plan will be reviewed and approved by the Montgomery County Department of Permitting Services. And that plan basically does not allow any untreated water to leave a site at any, at any conditions. All measures will address ten year storm and basically they will contain any mud water or runoff that basically occur during the time when the land is disturbed. So it, there is not, well, there is always a chance, but the, the plan will not allow that water to leave a site untreated. We will have a series of measures that will include basically stone filters, sand filters and earstike that will collect the water directed to one location and, and discharge it through the stone filters. And basically, the, the water shouldn't be leaving the site unclean. There is always a chance that higher stormer may come and basically break our, break our sediment control measures. In that case, the contractor and the owner obligated to restore everything to, to the original conditions. And, but, but being a civil engineering this business for almost fifteen years here in U.S., it happens two or three times on, on a large commercial development projects when basically these devices didn't work out due to the large amount of storms that was received. But in any case, owner is totally responsible for any damage that could basically occur during the construction due to the, any natural event or contractor's negligence in this site. And current owner is responsible for addressing that.
And how about after the construction? And you've got the, the tanks that you're installing on the back of the property?
Right.
What happens if there is a natural event that exceeds the capacity of those tanks?
Well, the, the, this gravel, gravel trenches are designed basically for the two inch storm. What's happened, and, and if we go to, to the detail, you can see that larger storms will bypass them. When the smaller rain come, it's through the leaders, it's basically going to this gravel, it's going to this gravel device that has a certain volume or certain capacity.
Right.
When it's reaching the capacity, the drain, the runoff will go through the, just down spot and will be spilled to the surface.
And, and since that surface on Geneva Avenue is at a higher altitude than the homes on Ritchie Avenue, aren't the homes on Ritchie at risk?
Not necessary. As I mentioned before, the current site doesn't have any stormwater management in place. And there was question if gravel is considered as impervious area. Practically, that may be questioned, but theoretically, entire country compare it in all calculation as impervious area because it does generate almost or exactly the same runoff. And I'm talking about compacted gravel. It generates the same runoff as the asphalt surface. So if they don't have currently problem, I can guarantee that after this development, there will be less runoff leaving the site than it is right now. Entire property is hydrologic soil B and it's very, very well drained soil type that it's, it's, it's very, it's, the entire Montgomery County has probably thirty percent of this well drained soil and this site has this type of soil.
I remember other engineers telling us about the imperviousness of, of gravel. So that doesn't surprise me what you've told me. But have you considered using pervious asphalt or other, other measures for the sidewalks and driveways?
That's what we are using. This dry well will be installed only for the roof drainage. The hard surface or driveways will, we are going to use permeable payment with a stone storage beneath the, beneath the surface. So basically, the rainwater will get and will be stored underneath of the driveway. It's, it's basically, as I said, hundred percent of stormwater management to the, to the current city regulation will be addressed to the site. We are not asking for any waiver or any exclusions.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Clay?
Councilmember Schultz and I are trying to figure out the examples of permeable pavements over here. Apparently, I need another eye surgery.
We both do currently.
Well, this is really small.
No, really. If I hold it far enough away that it's clear, the type is too small to read it.
Okay. So, well, this is fascinating. So ordinarily, I would think that more houses would be better because I'm the kind of person that thinks, you know, we should have more density closer to the urbanized areas. But if the result of fewer houses is that they are thirty-five hundred to four thousand square feet, I can't see how that fits in with the character of the neighborhood.
Two, two houses on top of each other?
I don't know, because, you know, I've been in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
The people across the street from me, I think, own the little, the school daycare over there.
Right, there is daycare right across.
Yeah. So, yeah, that seems like you're creating a lot of impermeable surface and in fact, a lot more than had been there on the lot before. I don't know, I just, I don't get the four thousand square foot house.
Well, it's four thousand, four thousand, it's through the two...
Step up to the...
Four thousand is a two-story structure and the partial basement that we have for this home. So it's not, it's basically not one floor plan that has four thousand square foot. And the only thing that regulates, it's a zoning requirement about amount of impervious area that is allowed per lot and we are not exceeding that amount. So, so far, we, we are not aware about regulations that restrict the square footage of the home. But if, if, if City of Tacoma Park would like to put limits, the owner is definitely, will address that. The owner is, I, I have a pleasant experience working with him because he really looking forward for the community and I know he's not going to leave there, but he is open to listen to any concern. And I heard a lot about sidewalk issue. He's willing to install it if, if the city will ask for direction, give direction or request it, he will pay and install the sidewalk on his property. But we hear some different concern because there is no actual ride off way for that. When, if you do that, it will be like a private sidewalk and it's create a lot of, a lot of maintenance issue. So it, it was briefly decided not to do it at this point, but if during the time when project will get under construction, city will decide to install it, he, he will pay for that, it's out of question. He is open to work with the community, with the council members, and he is ready to address any comments.
Sure. Well, I would suggest that you deed enough of an easement to the city that we can plant street trees and have a sidewalk there.
We, we are giving an easement, public utility easement. If, if, we definitely giving ten feet easement along the property. But I, I hear different stories and the last one I hear is that it's still not enough to have a sidewalk.
Ten feet is not enough to have a sidewalk?
Well, no.
You've been talking to the people in my ward, haven't you?
No, no, no. I, I meant to say that public utility easement does, still doesn't allow them to install a sidewalk within, within an easement.
Is that the case?
I'm not an engineer, but my guess would be you wouldn't want to put this, you'd probably want to have a public utility easement and space for the sidewalks so they're not encroaching on one another. But this is certainly something we can have the city engineer talk to the developer about.
Because the public utility easement is underground and you don't want to put a sidewalk? I mean, I don't get it.
Because they can't access it.
Is it underground?
No, no, no.
You can't access, you don't want to have a sidewalk over the piping is what I'm guessing, the gas mains and things like that. I think it's just simply a matter of the city engineer talking if they're willing to dedicate an easement. Ten feet is usually more than enough for a sidewalk. It's usually, yeah, no more than eight feet, even at ADA standards.
No, it's usually sixty inches, five foot wide sidewalk.
Right.
So I'm not sure what the issue is. I, I assume, have you spoken to the city engineer?
Yeah, yeah, I spoke to Mr. Ali a while ago. And at that time, he, he said that there is some plans that city developed, there is some road improvements plan along the reach in Geneva Avenue. At that time, when I discussed with him, he wasn't sure on which side of the road the sidewalk is preferred to go. But I don't think he was, he wasn't aware that there is no public ride off way. But if, if easement is helping, we definitely, even right now on the plan, we have shown this ten feet public utility easement. And if city requests to install a sidewalk, I'm sure the owner would be glad to do that. I already discussed it with him.
I think for tonight's discussion, we understand the issue and the, and the city manager can follow up with that. Thank you.
Okay. So how much are these houses going to sell for?
Well, it, it, I, I did ask this question today on, from the owner before coming to the meeting and it will be from low five hundred to the five hundred, high five hundred, basically. The smaller unit will be around five hundred fifty thousand and the largest home will be around six hundred thousand.
So someone's going to be able to buy a four thousand square foot house in Tacoma Park for six hundred? I might move.
Yeah, really.
Can I help so?
Here's my, here's my concern. I mean, if that's really the prices that they're going to sell for, it's less of a concern for me. But I, I watched people McMansion their houses on, on Ethan Allen and a couple of streets around town. And on Ethan Allen, there were two houses that they then tried, they, they built them as, I would guess they were probably, I don't know, maybe they were two thousand square feet on each floor. It seems large, but they were really big. And, you know, it was like a giant house on a postage stamp sized lot. And then they sat on the market and they sat on the market and they sat on the market and they didn't sell because people had kind of delusions of grandeur about what the pricing structure was. But, you know, five hundred to six hundred thousand is a much more reasonable price. So I'm glad to hear that you're not going to try to sell them for a million dollars.
Well, I, I cannot comment a lot on that, but I definitely asked this question before coming to this meeting. And that's the answer that I got. Basically, it, it will be nice houses, but he is planning to spend around eighty, ninety dollars per square foot. He already has a builder that he worked with the builder for a while and he's getting a good price on the construction. So I, I think it's feasible.
Okay. Well, thanks for answering the questions.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. First, want to say I appreciate the owner investing in the Tacoma Park community with, with building. I do have a couple of questions. First has to do with the planting of the trees. So the, the replacement trees, are those going to be planted on the, on the lot?
That's correct. All eleven or twelve trees, it will be calculated exactly by the city arborist and they will be planted on the lot, in the front and in the back of the property.
And will it be clear to the people who buy the houses, they're then responsible for those trees and their, the, the fact that they would continue to live for, I forget what the period of time is, it's at least a year, if not more than that, and be responsible for replacing those trees if they don't?
I, I don't know if there is enforcement from the owner to the future buyers to enforce that. I don't know if there is way, but I know that City of Tacoma Park will see approved landscape plan where this tree is allocated.
Well, I was saying it would be good, it is the response, the, the new owner would be responsible for those trees. So I think it would, it's responsibility of the owner, builder, seller to make sure that the new owners know that they have that with requirements.
I, I'm not sure how, how that will be handled legally, but I know that City of Tacoma Park will have right to inspect it, let's say, in a year after completion of developments and they would be able to enforce the new owners to make sure those trees are in good conditions. After the project is completed, the landscape architect will give a year warranty for their trees. And, but, but after that year, it will be responsibility of the new owner to maintain and make sure it survives.
Yeah.
Those trees will be large, it will be one inch minimum diameter. So it's not going to be small, shabby things that nobody will see and, and cut them with a lawnmower. So when the owner will buy it, that he will see significant trees planted and I don't think anybody will, will kill it after the year.
And then the, the other question I had was, I listened very closely to what you said about the existing trees and there's a few that you've gotten approval from the city arborist to, to cut down. But then you use some language, which was basically, you said that you hope that the construction wouldn't damage the remaining trees?
Was it, was...
That, that didn't give me a lot of confidence that the, the trees that are, are not going to be cut down by approval are actually going to be dealt with in a way that they would survive the construction. Hope is, hope is not a strategy, kind of mind.
That's correct. The detailed tree save plan is going to submit to the city arborist. And during our site meeting, we discuss how the, what measures we, we are going to take. So basically, each trees has a critical root zone. And in order for the, in order for the tree to survive, less than thirty percent of that critical root zone shall not be disturbed. In some of the cases on, on the back, on the side, on the side of the property, on the church side, we have a couple trees that really close to the property line. And what, what we implementing to do, we are going to root, root prune them right along on the building line. And then we will put a twelve inch, it's basically mulch layer that will be used for the construction, food traffic and maybe equipment traffic to make sure that twelve inch layer will protect the root zone, that will not disturb that. And also, there will be some chemical supply around the entire root zone for that trees to make sure that, that will reduce the stress. There is a lot of means and methods and that will be clearly specified on the tree saving plan.
Great. And then, just going back to the house size, these are all single family homes, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And they're all two-story? What's the height?
That's correct. There is two stories and there is partial basement at the back of the property.
And do they, obviously, the height and massing lot percentage meets the current zoning codes?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes, absolutely.
And anything about, and any intention about exceeding the current energy standards for the construction of these houses? Is there any desire interest by the developer to, to build houses that are LEED certified or, is LEED, LEED, there's LEED residential, right?
Some of the items that we are putting in place, they basically LEED item like permeable payment. And in terms of the specific, we are not, we are not applying for any certification In terms of the specific, we are not, we are not applying for any certification or trying to achieve any LEED point. It's very seldom happening on residential development. But, and we have conceptual design for this building. The footprint is correct, and I saw some elevation and a planned use of the homes. And they have fairly large windows that will provide a lot of natural light. And I don't know in terms of what materials they are going to use, but hopefully, they will be LEED items for this construction. But I cannot comment at this point. But just a short answer, we are not applying for any LEED certification.
Great. Well, I encourage you to continue to work with the residents to resolve some of the outstanding issues and concerns they have. I'm generally a supporter of the idea of the project, but am concerned about the issues that the residents mentioned, and would hope you would, as you seem to have done so far, work in a cooperative way with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any more questions. Thanks very much. I guess we'll go to the next item, Crossroads Farmers Market. Okay, welcome.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Michelle Dudley. I've been with the Crossroads Market since 2008. That year, I worked with John Hyde on the project, and since then, the past two years, I've been working with, with these ladies.
Sure. I'm Michelle Levy. I've been working on the project since May 2009.
And I'm Rosa Sanchez. This is my third year working with the Farmers Market. A SNAP outreach specialist.
So we're just going to take a few minutes and give a little bit of background on the market programs at present, the growth the market has experienced, and then specifically about the large grant request and our relationship with the city of Tacoma Park. So what is the Crossroads Farmers Market? In addition to being a now 24-week seasonal farmers market, we've really begun operating over the past two years as a year-round nonprofit that's committed to food access in the Tacoma-Lingley community. And we've expanded beyond the actual market itself. So you'll see in the center of this diagram, there's the Crossroads Farmers Market and our Fresh Checks Program, which is the double dollars financial incentive program for federal nutrition benefits clients that I'm sure you're all familiar with. In addition to that, we've developed four other programs that we see as directly supporting and growing the market itself. So we have what we're calling Eat Fresh Maryland, which is a Maryland Farmers Market Network. Right now, we have 15 farmers markets and agencies around the state that have joined in the past two months. This launched in January, that are working to increase access to low-income families around the state. We have the Urban Farmer Training Program in partnership with the PG County-based Urban Farming nonprofit, which is working directly to develop vendors for the market. We have our Healthy Eating Crossroads Initiative, which is our partnership with Rolling Terrace Elementary School that the city is supporting, which is outreach and education to potential shoppers and bringing rolling terrace families to the market. And our SNAP outreach program that Rosa is facilitating, which is actually conducting eligibility prescreenings and application assistance for the SNAP program, which is Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, formerly known as food stamps, and that's directly increasing the market client base. So this chart shows our fresh checks growth by the numbers. We think that's really the best way to gauge the growth and success over the market over the past four years. It also shows our projected numbers for 2011, which are humbling and exciting to see the rate of growth since the market launched almost five seasons ago. Probably most noteworthy is 2010, where we distributed almost $40,000 worth of fresh checks. We also, it's worth looking at the SNAP column, where number of food stamp users at markets significantly increased due directly to Rosa's work. And we're looking to distribute approximately $65,000 in fresh checks this coming season. We have a number of new outreach initiatives that are going to be, which we'll talk more about, that we think are going to increase significantly. Also worth looking at the sales for 2010. The market saw about $85,000 in revenue. That, of course, went directly to the local farmers that are selling at the market. About 50% of sales were in fresh checks, and approximately 25 were in federal nutrition benefits, so WIC and senior benefits and SNAP, and another 25% in cash. While that's abnormal for the typical farmers market, which tends to cater more towards an affluent customer base, this actually reflects a growth in cash sales, which for us means that our customer base is diversifying.
Okay. Just a few more details on our year-round programming. The three of us are currently part-time contractors for Crossroads year-round, working on these off-season programs as well. Like we said, Rosa's running the SNAP outreach and enrollment program at market. Do you want to explain?
Sure. Right now, there's no farmers market. I'm doing the outreach, going different sites that I'm doing the community organizer, helping the community if they, leaving them, if they qualify for the food stamps program. So that's what I'm doing right now. And since June, as you can see here, that I have done 307 applications that have submitted to the county. And about 90% of those applications has been already approved for the ones I did after the market finished back in October.
And as we said, the, those customers, clients that Rosa's serving, we see later at the Farmers Market and other farmers markets are seeing an increase in, in food stamp usage at the, at the other markets as well. The Healthy Eating Crossroads Initiative is our partnership with Rolling Terrace Elementary School. Through that, this past year, we had three farmer visits to the fifth grade Spanish immersion classroom. Rolling Terrace has taken field trips to our market. There have been four healthy, healthy eating cooking demos, where I've taken market produce into the school, and we've cooked with the fifth graders. And there's ongoing what we're calling farm-to-fork nutrition education for kids and parents. And we're, a lot, many of the Padres Latinos, women's group at Rolling Terrace, are looking to be vendors with us in this upcoming year, either prepared food or artisans. Here's a picture of Rosa performing her SNAP outreach, actually, the day that Undersecretary of Agriculture Kevin Concanon came to see what kind of program we had going on. As Michelle mentioned, we're also heading this Maryland Farmers Market Network, working with grants from the USDA and Maryland Department of Agriculture, where we have over 15 markets and other agencies involved, and we're designing these bilingual marketing materials, promotional materials for WIC and SNAP at farmers markets throughout the state. The Urban Farmer Training Program, we're working with nine participants from many different countries and the US in a year-round Urban Farmer Training Program, with the goal being that they start their own urban farmer, urban farming businesses in Montgomery and Prince George's County. And this past year, the trainees sold their harvests at Crossroads Market and will continue to do so. Here's just a picture of two of our Urban Farmer Trainees that are going on to do great things. And here, they're selling honey at the Farmers Market and herbs this past year. This is the Urban Farmer Trainees with Undersecretary of Agriculture Concanon.
So the following chart just looks at the funding sources for the programs we just mentioned. And you'll see, and I'm sorry, we couldn't get it all on one page, it's two parts. But the programs that are still currently underfunded are the Crossroads Farmers Market for operations and just market management in 2011, and obviously for 2012, as well as our Fresh Checks Program, Fresh Checks Program for the upcoming season, and our SNAP outreach program. So we've been leveraging public and private funds. I won't read through the list, but I'll give you a moment to look through our different funders. Federal funding from the USDA, state funding from Maryland Department of Agriculture, Montgomery County Council, of course, the city of Tacoma Park has been our largest funder to date. We've also gotten grants from Kaiser Permanente. Last year, they funded our Fresh Checks Program and actually recently invited us to apply for an invite-only larger pool of funding, and the K-Fritz Foundation. But what we're really intending to show with all of this is that while these other programs, these supplemental programs have been well-funded and incredibly successful in helping grow the market, we're currently underfunded to operate the market itself to, it's really as successful as it could be and should be for the coming season. And that's where we're coming to the city.
So this is somewhat of a summary of our $20,000 grant request that we've submitted this year. This is the first time that we've been in a, in a position to request for funding other than somewhat urgent funding or funding for the immediate market season. So this request, in the 20,000, there's an approximately $8,000 figure that is, that is for 2012. We are planning ahead. I'll, I can pass out, maybe after I go over this, but we have a sheet that has a little bit more detail than this. But the first line item, the 6,000 for two market managers, and the following, 6,000 for the community outreach assistant. We've learned, like, and I've learned through my experience, that, that it takes more than one person to run this. And that was my experience in 2008, was, it was a very independent venture. And you can see with our fresh check numbers, the growth that has happened in 2009 and 2010. With, with a team of three, three folks, on Wednesdays alone, the three of us together are putting in 22 hours a day on Wednesdays to put on this market. And that's not to mention the other programs and the other things that happen on non-Wednesdays. So these, these two first-line items are in reference to, to funding our positions and a new community outreach assistant that we're looking to hire, who would do primarily outreach on Maple Avenue and to the MRX speaking community here in Tacoma Park. And these figures include funds for 2011 and 2012. And without those, without those funds, because I'm going to address as I go through each line item, what it would be like if we're, if we're not receiving that funding, we would be looking for additional funding sources for 2012. That's not as, not as urgent as the upcoming season. And the community outreach assistant, the change that we would make here is that we would just be planning on, on having this new person on our team for the first year or for half the hours. Would it be helpful for me to hand out the, the sheet right now that is more details of this?
And while you're doing that, just to quickly jump in for a second, and part of the reason that we're adding in this $8,000 for 2012 with this particular grant request is that while we tend to think of the farmers market season and then off-season, for the market to run successfully, planning for the coming season really needs to start in January. So in a market that runs through October, and then we begin actively revising our guidelines, doing vendor recruiting, putting together a vendor application in mid to late January, on top of a market like ours that doesn't operate like a typical farmers market, because we're also doing all these different programs around federal nutrition benefits, there's a lot of our data collection and analysis that comes into play. So when we talk about these figures being for the 2012 market, we're really talking about starting in January of 2012 and working through that spring. So we really do see it as more of a continuous process than the separation of two market seasons that would be six or eight months apart.
And a good example of that would be my, having come on to the, the market project in June 2008, just a week and a half before the market happened. And we can see what, the results of the 2008 market. It was a very weak year for Crossroads Farmers Market. The first year was, was much more successful, and the following years have been as well. But that 2008 was, was a year of growth and learning. So that started-
So planning ahead matters.
Planning ahead matters. And we recognize the, the investment, you know, financial and otherwise, that so many individuals, community agencies, organizations, the city have put into this project. And I think part of our planning now for 2012 is really wanting to ensure sustainability of this project, that every year has been sort of touch and go until now. And we're looking to streamline things and make sure that this is going to be a community resource that's available for years to come.
So skipping down to the third line item, the 1,500 for new signage brochures, banners, that would be for both split equally between 2011 and 2012. We'd like to make a specific focus on ward sticks, signage and outreach, be it sandwich boards or signage directing customers from Carroll Avenue, from behind 7676, because our current outreach has been at the, in front of New Hampshire, in front of 7676, New Hampshire, and on, at, in that area. And we'd also like to have other permanent signage around the area. So without that, without those funds, we would maintain current signage, which is very subpar. The next line item, the 4,200, would be for the 2011 market bus, which would run for 24 weeks, that transports a number of Tacoma Park senior citizens to our market on a weekly basis. And it would cover market musicians. We support, we hire local community musicians on a weekly basis to come in and perform. So without those funds, we would be supporting the Tacoma Park senior population at Victory Towers and Maple Avenue to a lesser degree, and we would be supporting the community musicians in the area to a lesser, a lesser degree for finding free entertainment. The next item is the 1,050 for the 2012 market bus and musicians. That would just be for May and June, since the grant period for, for Tacoma Park is July 1st through June 30th. The $500 for MDA insurance, that's required. We would need to find that elsewhere if it wasn't available through this funding source. And then we also are requesting 500 for market equipment in 2012.
So we just wanted to put together this chart to recognize the funding that the city has provided to the market over the past four years. And it's a long list. Like I said, the city has been our largest supporter to date, which is something that we make sure that all other markets and partners know, and something that actually in this Eat Fresh Maryland, the Maryland Farmers Market Network that we put together, whenever we talk about the support we've received from the city, other markets are pretty envious of how lucky we are to be situated in such a great place. So without walking through everything line by line, I guess I can just leave this up here for a minute. Feel free to stop us if you have any questions. And then the faces of the farmers market. This is really what makes Crossroads so unique. It's not just the programming we offer, but it's, I guess, the space that it creates for members of the community, specifically of the new app community. And something I think we all really enjoy so much about it, had a, a community meeting about today, actually, on the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, where we invited a bunch of community partners to just weigh in and tell us what they want to see in their farmers market for the 2011 season, is that it can be this intersection for people of so many different cultures and backgrounds. So just a few of the faces here. And then the market musicians that Michelle was talking about too, that we have every weekend market. So finally, we just wanted to thank you for your time tonight, for your continued support, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thanks. That was very helpful. I just had one short observation and a question. In the materials that you provided to us in the packet, in your overview of the program, you quoted some figures, and I just wanted to caution you that when I saw those, they just didn't look right at all. And it's not something that we have to spend a lot of time on, but I just wanted to note that you talked- time on, but I just wanted to note that you talked about, according to the Food Environmental, USDA Food Environment Analysis Atlas, an average of 560,000 Montgomery County families use SNAP benefits on a monthly basis in 2010. There's only 376,000 households, household units, according to the current census, in Montgomery County. So, somehow that is written wrong or using the wrong number.
It's an impressive number.
Yeah. It's impressive, but it's impossible.
I apologize. I believe that misprinted. I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, and just all of the figures in that area with registered in the WIC program and the students participating in the school lunch program, 433,000 participating in the school lunch program. I'm not sure whether that's just students who eat lunch or what it is. So, it's just, however it's written, it's like, you know, maybe that's the total number for, you know, each month, but just-
No, I appreciate that feedback. It's interesting, because the USDA launched this food and environmental atlas last year and had been heralded as this great resource, but it's good to know that it may not be accurate.
The numbers just don't make sense on their face. So, I just want to let you know that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And farther down in that section, you talk about the estimates of low-income families served, and you have estimates for ZIP Code 20912. And I was, can you just say a couple of words about how you determine the 20912 ZIP Code people? Is it from the information that they give you when they register in the program? Because it's always very helpful to know to what extent the funding that we're providing is helping people in the city. And I can sense from this that the impact and the effect is much broader than that, but, and that's all good, but it's also helpful to know that we're spending money on helping our residents. And to the extent that there can be information that makes that clear, that could be very helpful.
Sure. Well, to answer the first part of your question as far as knowing where people are coming from, like I mentioned in passing, data collection and analysis are a really big part of our program and going to be even more so for this coming season. We're working with the Wholesome Way Foundation, which is a national network of the 160 farmers' markets that are offering double-dollar programming in some capacity, and they put together a database, what they're calling Nourishing Neighborhoods Database, that Crossroads is one of the markets that piloted towards the end of last season and will be using throughout the whole 24 weeks this year. And whenever anyone who's Fresh Checks eligible comes to the market, the first time they come in, we take basic information from them, so name, you know, city, ZIP Code, how many people are in your household, what benefits programs are you participating in, languages spoken. And so, we have that saved, and every subsequent week when they come in to pick up their Fresh Check benefits, we find them in the database and track how often they've come, what they're receiving. So, we have really good records of that, which is how we're going to be able to keep close tabs on who the 20912 residents are, and actually something that we're planning for pretty intensely right now, and one of the reasons we're hoping to develop this new Community Outreach Assistant position, is because we know that the city's funds that have been allocated for Fresh Checks for this coming season are restricted to 20912 residents only. So, we're trying to increase outreach to potential Fresh Check recipients in Tacoma Park to make sure that we're really maximizing benefits to this immediate community.
It might also be helpful, like when I show up at the market, I'm a 20912 resident, but you're not tracking that.
Right.
And so, if there are, if there's a not labor-intensive or time-intensive way to sample folks who pay cash, that would be very helpful just to know that, what kind of market you're capturing there.
I think it would be possible to do kind of a sample, if not on a sample basis, do surveys, not to every person.
Right, right. Thanks. Councilmember Clay.
Thank you for coming. Guys, hi, Rosal.
Hi.
You have an impressive list of activities and a pretty broad array of funders, as I imagine several of your other farmers' markets are pretty jealous of. I note that you, on page three, under funds secured from other sources, you have 21,000 listed from the City of Tacoma Park small grant, but I think that that should be 1,500?
It was a $2,500 request this past year, and you were awarded the 1,500.
Right. So, 1,500 would be the small grant, but not 21,000.
Typo.
Not 21,500.
I'm sorry. We didn't care. Yes.
That's all right. So, your total support from the City of Tacoma Park this year that would be direct cash, if you were to receive a $20,000 grant from the large grant fund as well, would be $56,500, which I think would make you the prize winner for the largest amount of money that any entity got out of the City of Tacoma Park. And I tell you that I think that's probably pretty unlikely. And I don't want to in any way be discouraging of what it is that you're doing, because I think all the things that you're doing are really terrific. And I clearly see the way that you're going after funds from other groups, from Whole Foods, from Kaiser Permanente, and Montgomery County Council, looks like you've gotten some CDBG money from them maybe also, is great, but I have to tell you, it's not an investment that's sustainable over the long run for Tacoma Park. And what I remember about the Crossroads Farmers Market when they first came to us is that they had a plan for sustainability, and we provided a significant amount of money in years one, two, and three to get the market started. And that was a pretty significant commitment that we made at that time, and I think it has helped. I mean, certainly the seed money helped get the market started, and you guys have done some really terrific things with that. The next thing that I would say would be that continuing funding through the CDBG grant, you know, we took money, we were using money primarily for affordable housing support, and moved some of it over into the food support area for the CDBG grant, and made, I think, a policy decision to try to get some of that funding over into CDBG, and you could have a, you know, there's a three-year role essentially on CDBG funds. And so, then, you know, it comes back around to us again, and it's money for rolling tariffs and build is, I think, sort of, it's a food, it's part of a long-term project with rolling tariffs, and we're, I think we're in maybe, are we in the second year of that or in the third year of that, which was also going to be a project?
Yeah, I was in the second year.
And now, you know, it's $20,000, and it's these other additional things. And I think one of the things it says to the council, which we've talked about before, is I think we have to be really careful about how we offer funding sources, and maybe from this point forward, we should think about putting a restriction on the different sources of funding through which we provide things, so that we can look at funding for entities in a more holistic way before we kind of come to this point where we're at right now, where we have an entity who has, you know, some terrific programming, but sort of keeps coming back to different pots of money within the city. One of the reasons why we proposed moving a lot of this over into the CDBG grant, because that was something we'd continue on a three-year period and help work towards, you know, finding other permanent funding, which, again, I mean, clearly you guys have done a great job of. But I don't see whatever $56,500 support to the market as being equitable related to how we treat the various entities in the city that would like to have funding, and I don't see it as sustainable. So, you know, at the point we're at now, I don't think the city should be expanding funding for the market. I mean, we're looking more for the market to be more self-sustaining, not less self-sustaining. So, I think that's one of the surprises to me. And I hate to be the person that, you know, that delivers that message, but that's part of my, that's part of my job in working with taxpayers. And I think, you know, personally, I think what you're doing is terrific and impressive, and I think taxpayers probably think that as well, but it's just a question, you know, relative to things that we provide to various groups and what our original plan was, you know, where our agreements were made with the market and everything. I think that it's a stretch.
Yeah, and I think I would speak for all of us in saying that we appreciate that, and we recognize that it was a big ask, and like I said, we're very aware of the city's continued support and how sometimes, you know, it's hard to know where we are with that particular relationship. I would just say, though, that I don't see it as being less self-sustaining. I, while looking at this grant request compared to the large grant that we requested last year, it's certainly a bigger amount, but we've been very intentional over the past two years about working to diversify our funding sources, which I think we have done successfully. We're also looking to move beyond relying solely on grant funding, and that's, they're small and incremental steps, but we implemented vendor fees last year, so vendors were paying back 5% of all of their revenue to the market, and that was enough to operate one specific program that we really needed last year. And we're expecting that 30% to 50% increase in vendor fees this coming year because of increased numbers of vendors and increased traffic that we're expecting at market. So, we share your concerns about a sustainability plan, and that's absolutely our top priority at present in planning for the market.
Today, we were also working with one of our supporters on developing the business sponsorship letter, and we're going to be going that route as well.
I understand. And like I said, I appreciate, and I understand that, you know, people have more, we're providing some more money to some groups because of specific economic challenges, but that's, you're asking us for expansion money. And so-
And also just-
Go ahead. Part of this request was based on what we've seen as standard from other markets. We have seen that we're kind of in an awkward position, that many farmers' markets are either funded through, like, larger organizations or larger nonprofits, or are put on through their municipalities. For example, Riverdale Park Farmers Market is funded solely through their city. And so, based on these other models that we've seen, we're, you know, trying to, trying to make it work in the way that we can.
Yeah. So, when we bring that up, just so it doesn't seem as if the request, you know, the amount we're requesting was arbitrary or that we intended for it to be extraneous, but it was, I understand that it's a lot for the city, but we also base that on what we're seeing as sort of standard practice for markets in suburban and urban areas, and that's how we've developed our budget.
Well, there's a lot of different things go into how much money that different municipalities might have. So, for example, one entity might have a really big commercial tax base that they have, like Rockville has a lot of commercial property. I don't think they'd have any trouble at all funding you, but that's not the situation we're in.
Right. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can I just get a clarification on the money? What I took from the bottom of the blue sheet was that the request that we're looking at here is the $20,000 from the general fund budget as the large grant request, and-
That's correct.
And that there's also $25,000 for FY12 CDBG?
That's correct.
But that's not 35. That was FY11, right?
That's the year that we're in right now.
Was 35, 35 CDBG funding?
This says 20, well, what we have on the front is 25,000 CDBG and 10,000 general fund. But that's different than what it says on the funding summary.
I believe, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, you all may recall from the first reading of Budget Amendment Two, there were two CDBG years of funding for the market that were getting rolled into one program year.
That is correct.
I think that may be-
I don't remember that.
Yeah, it was part of the budget amendment that had first reading last week, but that would be for the CDBG funding, program year 35, and program year 36 were being rolled into one for a total of $35,000, and that may be, not sure what you're looking at there.
That may be the difference.
I believe so.
Because that makes sense based on the special consideration on the bottom of the blue sheet, and then the 35,000 listed under B funding summary. Okay. I just want to make sure that we were clear on what we were looking at here.
And the clarification, the CDBG funds, the 25,000 that are available this year to the Crossroads Farmers Market are for the Fresh Checks only, so it's not for any of the operational pieces, it's just the double dollars program.
Okay, thanks.
Wait, I'm still confused.
I'm not now.
Well, good for you.
What can I help you with?
So, it says prior funding budgeted or distributed CDBG.
So-
Fiscal year 10 was $10,000.
Last year.
So, that's last year, and you spent that. And fiscal year 11, which is this year, is $25,000. So, what did we roll together from CDBG?
I'm going to look to Sarah, but as you probably recall, with CDBG fund, funding can be approved in a particular program year, but it cannot actually be contracted and expended until all projects, I'm looking to Sarah, in a prior year have been completed. So, the CDBG funding originally for FY10, I think, is rolled into FY-
Because they didn't spend it all?
I think they actually could not spend it because they were still asking prior year CDBG projects. I'm going to look to my CDBG expert who's walking down the aisle.
Hi, Sarah.
To clarify, the county does not allow us to enter into a new contract until all the projects from the prior contract have been closed out. So, when we go through and we do the budgets for each fiscal year, we look at the program year that's coming up. So, if there is a delay in a project, it holds up all the other projects in the pipeline, which is one of the reasons why they're combining two program years into a single contract this go-around, in an effort to get everybody caught up, so that there is a closer or shorter time period between when the dollars are awarded or authorized by the city council, and then they actually become available. There have been lags as long as two years or longer between the time then you approve a project and the funding actually gets available. And after this contract has expired, which is the $35,000, I believe, we'll actually be at a point where projects approved for FY12 will be able to actually access the funding rather than waiting till FY13 or '14.
So, the $20,000 for FY12 has already been through our approval process?
Correct. It's 25,000.
25,000. And the 35 is made up of the 10 from-
Right.
So, it's not 56 or whatever it was, it was, it's potentially the 20 for the general fund and the 25 from CDBG.
Except that they didn't spend the 10 last year, because we gave it to them, but they couldn't have it apparently, because the county's meaning.
The current contract that they have right now expires the end of June, so they have to spend all of their funding-
$35,000 by the end of June.
Between November, when we actually entered into the contracts, I believe.
I believe the contract ends in September.
There's so many dates and numbers in my head right now. Anyway, they have to, they have to spend all the money down before they can access the second or the, rather, the third and final CDBG award.
Okay. So, what we're talking about is they have to spend $35,000 before the end of September, and then they're on for another $25,000 for fiscal year 12, which is the time period, really, when we're talking about this $21,500.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Schultz.
The issue right here, I think, is, or at least the one that Councilmember Clay has raised, is really the question of sustainability. And it occurs to me that when we talk about sustainability in this situation, we're not really talking about it in the same way we might mean it in another situation. I mean, in some cases, sustainability might mean where you make grants of a certain amount to get something going, so that it can, like jump-starting a car, so it's that once it gets up to speed, it can run on its own and generate its own cash flows and that sort of thing. But that's a model that doesn't fit what you guys are trying to do here, because other than the vendor fees, everything, which is- other than the vendor fees, everything, which is, let's put it this way, the vendor fees are your sole, really your only line item in your, in your sources of funds that are, is money that's literally generated by your running these markets. Now, I don't know how the market works that runs on Laurel Avenue, but obviously it has to be pretty well, you know, commercially self-sustaining enterprise because somebody is continuing to do it and somebody's picking up the, you know, the cost. And so perhaps those are, and I really have no idea, I can only guess that maybe it's, you know, rents for the space, or maybe it's a percentage of the gross sales or something of that nature, like a little miniature shopping center. But in that sense, like if we were talking about that, this project is never, ever going to become self-sustainable because you're not going to, or at least in our imagination, be able to envision having so many vendors and being able to charge so much to them that you're going to be able to do all of this. You're always going to be dependent on sources of grants from foundations or gifts from corporations or whatever it might be, contributions from individuals. So I'm, and I think it's important to understand that, that, well, I mean, I think it would be great that we could say, we, as a city council, certainly would be a worthy goal for us to be able to say, well, we want to give you enough money to get up to speed, but we have other priorities, there's other sources of need out there that we have to meet. I'm not sure that that's achievable for this city. I mean, an example might be the Tacoma Old Town Business Association, which we make a grant to annually of about $30,000. And that's sort of been, from what I can tell in my brief time on the city council, an accepted cost because the city sees that, for the time being, that organization simply needs that money from the city of Tacoma Park to do what it does and it's important to this, to this city council, the mayor, that we do it. And I kind of think that that's the kind of category that you fall into, is that there doesn't, there isn't a light at the end of the tunnel for the city to be providing you money. I'm not sure that we should expect to see a light at the end of the tunnel, that what you're trying to do here is going to be continuously working to raise money from whatever sources you can. And if you can find money from federal agencies and state agencies and Kaiser Permanente that, you can come to us sometime and say, well, thank you for all your help, but we don't need any more money from the city of Tacoma Park, that'll be great. But I don't know that you're right there yet and I don't think you're in a position to promise us that you're going to get to that point this year or next year at least. So I think it's important on that basis that we, that our job, we can't say that our job is done. I think we need to, we need to continue to provide, provide the money to help you with your, basically with what you're looking for is overhead help and marketing help, is that not right? You know, promotional help, which should help to, I mean, I would assume that the monies that the city has granted in the past have helped you leverage grants from these other agencies and foundations as well, because it demonstrates that you've got the support of the local community, is that not right? Do you think that's something that is a relevant argument going forward?
Absolutely, it's, it was something that, you know, our private lenders like K-Brit, Sweet Highs or Permanente were, looked at very closely.
Right.
And we hope to be able to continue to leverage those funds.
So it's safe to say that the money we're giving you is helping you to leverage a lot of, a lot of, a substantial amount of other source, sources. And I'm hoping for my own self that that leverage will become more powerful because it can be sort of a virtuous circle. As you grow, you get better at attracting more money and that sort of thing. And I also think that what we're trying to do here is to put quality food into the mouths of our lowest income people in the city of Tacoma Park and the immediate adjacent areas, which I think is, is a pretty strong case for you guys, even though you do have some people like me who come up there and shop on Wednesdays and are really happy to have the opportunity to pay cash out of pocket. And in particular, I love the snowballs that get, those up there, those are like on a hot summer day, they're absolutely incredible. I wanted to ask, last year you received a grant from, that Undersecretary Concanon announced, it was a little over $50,000. But I don't, I see only a $25,000 here on the first line USDA FMPP grant. Where is that $50,000 grant?
Let's see, if we can go back to the slide I'm here.
That is the, that was a grant through the Farmers Market Promotion Program.
Right.
And that is going to fund currently our Maryland Farmers Market Network activities.
Wow, the reason that you're seeing the 25 is it's a two-year grant from USDA?
Okay, so this is your first year?
Exactly, so in the grant, if that's what you're looking at, where it says for fiscal year 2011, that half of it would be for this year and the other half is 2011.
Oh, okay, so that does, that second half doesn't show up in this document?
Great activity actually began in November of 2010 and will finish in 2012.
Yeah.
Another, the last question I have is that, is the idea of trying to hire this person to assist you in marketing to Maple Avenue. The enrollment, I would think, of children in our elementary schools and down in that neck, neck of the woods, Tacoma Elementary, and the other one, I would imagine that most of those children are 20912 children. And I would imagine as well that they run free lunch programs and that they have data on the families that qualify for those kind of programs. Is there any way that you could tie, work through those, the administrators of those two schools, or maybe the middle school itself, I'm not sure about that, but at least the two elementary schools to reach, to identify the families that would be eligible just by virtue of the fact of their income levels for fresh checks? And they may already be members of SNAP, but they may not be aware of the existence of this program or the fresh checks thing.
That would, that's great. Be a very efficient way to.
Yeah, it would be. Because, yeah, because there's so many, there's quite a density of kids in this neighborhood. They're not just on Maple Avenue and they're not just Amherst speaking folks, although we know there's a lot of Amherst speaking people that live in that area. So that would help you to get into other streets within the 20912 area.
I agree. Thank you, it's a wonderful suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one, one comment in regard to what Fred was saying. I think we'd be interested in, in sitting down and hearing more about the situation with the Tacoma Business Association and how the funding has been permanent with them. And we, we knew that going into this request and, you know, also thought about the possibility of Tacoma being a permanent funding source, but at the same time, we could also, we'd also like to speak with you about.
Well, don't misunderstand, don't misunderstand my comments, is that I'm not suggesting that you become a permanent fundee of the city. Because to the extent that you can find your sources of money from, and become independent or, and that's of the city, we want to encourage you to go that way. If you can get grants sufficient that you don't need city money each and every year, that means then that if you do need money, then we can say, well, sure, we'll help out because you've got, you're going through a rainy day or a grant that you were counting on didn't come through. It would certainly make it a lot easier on us to be able to fund you when you really needed it as opposed to just making it a predictable thing year in and year out. I just cited it, that Tacoma Old Town Organization as an example where we've, the city has seen it as a really important and valuable organization to achieving our long-range goals for the city.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Thank you. Couple of things, one is, I just wanted to point out some numbers. It's kind of questionable about whether it's sustainable or whether we want to provide this level of subsidy. So by your own numbers, in 2011, we're spending about $56,000, which are all between the two, the CDGB and the direct grants, large and small. And there's 800, 800 low-income families that are receiving money. So that equates about a $70 subsidy per year for those individuals. And then if you look at the total budget, it's 242,000 and there's a little more than 2,200 people on here, talking about a $106 subsidy.
It's 8,800.
I think the family, I think it's based on families.
Right, but then they, they put a number in there, 8,850?
Yeah, I was going based on the subsidy.
Oh, you're doing families.
Family, sorry. So that's just, you know, I guess we should decide here on the council whether we think that's a subsidy worthwhile based on what's being delivered. You know, one of the things that's really hard for me on this is that the county council is actually giving a significant, a subsidy that's significantly smaller than we are. And Prince George's County is not, is not giving any sort of support. And that, you know, the tax base for both those entities is much larger. Everyone who's listed as a Tacoma Park resident is also Montgomery County resident. And, you know, roughly the taxes someone pays here in Tacoma Park go roughly kind of two-thirds to the county, one-third to the city. So that, I think long-term, that doesn't seem sustainable to me either, or is not something I'm terribly excited about supporting. I had a question about whether you've talked to Acasa of Maryland much, because it's not really highlighted in here at all, whether they're a key outreach partner or not, can you, can you discuss that at all?
We were, we've worked with them some, to a small degree in the past, in 2009, some of their health promoters were coming out to the market and doing food demos there. We have worked with them to some extent. We'd like to develop it further, but it's, there have been some challenges in having that materialize. But we were just discussing today that, at our community meeting, that we need to make specific plans with them this year. That's one of, someone that we see as, as a strong community partner.
And then in terms of the use of the CDGB funds, so they're all fresh check funds, right? They're all used, just doing the like high-level math, maybe they don't balance, maybe fresh check is used more by Tacoma Park residents than non-Tomato Park residents, but are you actually going to spend the $35,000 in this, before September? That was a little bit of a concern with me. About 50% of the 85,000 in, was the 85,000 2010 or 2011?
85,000?
I thought there was a revenue number that you put for.
85,000 total sales 2010.
Okay, so maybe it's going to be higher in 2011, but if 50% of that is fresh check, that's 42,000 fresh check in 2010. It kind of mapped, I was a little concerned about.
Sure, so actually the $10,000, so we were awarded CDBG in 2008, 2009, 2010, but we recently received the contract for 2008, 2009 combined as we discussed, and that's the 35,000. The 2009 and 2010 awards were explicitly for the fresh check program. The grant for, in 2008 that we'd written was actually to hire a number of community outreach workers. This was pretty early in the evolution of the market.
Yes, I'm just talking about the 35,000 that's been now compressed to 2011. My understanding is that has to be spent in 2011 on fresh check.
That's correct, but that first 10,000, that was originally that grant that was written for community outreach program and not just for fresh checks.
Okay.
Is being used for community outreach and related expenses. So it's 25,000.
Will that be used?
We hope so. When the grant was written, I don't think that we all realized that it would be limited, that those fresh check funds would be limited to 20912 zip codes. And so that is what, that is the reason that we've proposed to have a new community outreach assistant for 20912 residents because we were trying to spend this additional 25, or this 25,000 at the rate that we were at last year and the rate that if we continue that, we will not meet that 25,000 for fresh check funds.
But the rates of growth that we've experienced in the fresh check program in past years, combined with the new programs that we're hoping to put in place to really increase outreach, lead us to believe that yes, we will, but it's, we recognize that it's going to take a lot of work. And in addition to this other community outreach person that we're looking to bring onto the team, a lot of Rosa's SNAP outreach work is focused exclusively on 20912 right now. We've been talking about outreach, SNAP outreach in particular, to 20912 seniors. The idea is not just looking to bring more 20912 residents to the market, but making sure that they're participating in federal nutrition benefits programs that would then make them eligible for the fresh checks, so.
So our back row expert on CDBG, a couple of questions. One, what happens if, I have another question, so you might as well come down, but I can hear you.
It's going to be a long night.
This is kind of in with the kind of Michelle Obama, let's move campaign and healthy food and exercise, we're getting you going back and forth. So what happens if they don't use the, what happens to those dollars if they don't use them? Do we lose them?
Yes.
Is there any flexibility for us to allow some portion of them to be not used for, because since they're already committed, is there any flexibility for those monies to be used for administrative and not just fresh?
Yeah, and if I had been smart, I would have brought down the contract. The original, the two applications that the Crossroads Farmers Markets had submitted were modified, and you may not recall that, where we did include funding for some operating expenses. So I can forward, I can either go up and get it now or I can go back and email it to you tomorrow to identify what the budgets are.
If you want to know.
Yeah. But we have, we have made accommodation for some operating expenses, recognizing that the scenario that they'd originally proposed when they submitted their first CDBG application has changed. We also have the flexibility of amending the budget throughout the term of the contract. We need to go through and do that with the authorization of the county because they're the ones that are entering into contract. Historically, that has not been problematic, we've had to do that with other people, Man of Foods, for example. We modified it because of changes in mileage reimbursement for some of their staff or the delivery people, that type of thing. We also have the flexibility that if for some reason the Crossroads Farmers Market was unlikely to spend the funds down within the contract period, you could take those dollars and reallocate them for, for another project that had spent down, or had spent down their funds more quickly than anticipated. So we have some flexibility, but whatever is not spent by the end of the contract period that we have with the county does disappear and goes back to.
So for two, what's the run, what was the run rate in 2010 on 20912 fresh check?
It was like 40,000.
I, we, I don't have it with me right now. It was, I believe it was around 40% of our fresh check shopper was from 20912.
40%, of the 40,000.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's like a little less than 20,000. Okay. I would argue that for 2012, we maybe consider already amending the contract so that, because I'm getting the sense that, maybe I could be wrong, and I would always defer to Councilmember Schultz on this because it's in his ward, but I'm getting the sense that there may not be full support for a $20,000 grant in 2012 for administrative funds. And if we have funds that we know may not be used and we could spend some of them in that way, I would suggest we kind of adjust the contract.
Yeah, that, that has been a question of ours, with those $25,000 for the 2012. Would those $25,000 for the 20912 fresh checks be eligible? Could we use those funds for non-20912 residents, or could they be directed towards these other line items that we're presenting in this budget?
So I'd be supportive of that. The last question I have is for you, Sarah, really, is, sorry about that, is how does this fit into the larger New Hampshire Avenue kind of economic development and plan? And I ask that because I think, you know, Councilmember Schultz brought up the Old Town Business Association and our grant to them every year, and that effort really fits into a larger vision for Old Town, and now they're even doing outreach into the Maple Avenue area. And so I'm just sort of curious how this kind of, if there's a spillover effect, is this part of a larger?
From, as far as the New Hampshire Avenue corridor initiative, the Crossroads Farmers Market supports many of the goals of that initiative, particularly as far as economic development. The food topic aside, it generates traffic in the area, it creates more, a sense of liveliness, if you will, and encourages people to stop by, visit not only the market but other businesses in the area, creates a sense of safety, if you will, that there are all these people there, and they're not, they're outside, they're doing things, that type of thing. So as far as the support that it provides for that initiative, it's a very positive one on a variety of levels. Just creates that energy and that symbiotic relationship that we're hoping that we can pick up and expand throughout the corridor and not just at the Crossroads area.
And then just lastly, as more of a comment, the sustainability issue is a concern for me. You know, originally, we, this was envisioned as something that would become almost self-sustaining. It seems like that's not the case, that the economics of it just don't work. And the percentage of revenue that would come from self-sustaining activities is relatively small. If you looked at OTBA, I think between the Dues and the Street Festival, that makes up, Dan may know this better than I do, but I think around two-thirds of their total budget. And so that feels like something that's a little bit more sustainable. And having spent a fair bit of time in the nonprofit world and watched kind of small startups, there's often this, it's easy to get, the first couple of years, you are excited, you get new grants, and then it's really hard to maintain that from foundations without growing or diversifying in different ways. And I just get worried about the sustainability model. If it's not self-sustaining, but it's grant-funded sustaining, yeah, that's just a big concern for me.
Yeah, it's a very realistic check-in for us, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, and I mean, I think the work you guys are doing is great. It's very creative and inventive how you tie together both the educational component and the community involvement component. You know, my inclination would be not to fund it at the $20,000 level, but again, if Councilmember Schultz told me that he felt it was critical for his community and he wanted it in his ward, I would be open to that.
Thank you.
And I'll just remind my colleagues, before I go, to Councilmember Robinson, and then Councilmember Siemens, that we have been on this for an hour and three minutes. We still have about an hour and a half, so we're beginning to go after this item.
But there is no more important item. Well, I got to say...
And we don't have any decision to make tonight on this. Councilmember Robinson.
Well, I want my full time. I think it's, I think it's great that you're here.
It's a budget item.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Just to be clear, though, part of the purpose for this item is for the council to give me some general guidance as to whether or not you do have a decision to make. That's why I was giving you that look before.
Oh, I'm used to that look.
I'm in the process of shutting down the, my budget numbers internally this week, so we can start kind of seeing where everything sits, and I do need at least some general guidance from the council, whether you wish for me to put funding for this item in my proposed budget that's coming to you in April.
Councilmember Robinson.
I'll try to keep it short. Welcome, glad you're here. I do remember the early days when we asked John, I remember asking John in particular, bring back a business plan. Now you have a giant business plan, so things have certainly progressed. I still kind of wonder where you're going. And I've seen, I see enormous growth, and I wonder what's in your mind in five years or in 10 years. Are there other farmers markets of this type who are interested in really providing social service as much as anything else that have, that are five years ahead of you? And Josh's point about startup, beginning of nonprofit startups, I have a story of somebody who told me about startups, startup nonprofits, and he said they're just, just like babies. And the first couple of years, they're so cute, and everybody loves them, and the second, and then, but that's, but everything's kind of expanded, because the second, the third and fourth year, they're more like teenagers, and it's kind of like, when are they getting out of the house? We'll keep supporting you, but, and then the fourth and fifth year, it's, you know, like, see you later, you're on your own, like that. So that's a very much a real feeling in funders of nonprofits, at least that I've heard. Did you say that your vendor fees are going to go from 5% to 30% to 50% this year?
Oh, I'm sorry, they're staying 5%. We're expecting the total revenue generated to be a 30% to 50% increase over last year.
And how much, and did you say that 85,000 was your total income?
85,000 was the total sales, so total number of dollars that passed hands at the market, and we earned about 4,000 off of that.
Okay, so the 30% to 50% increase, you're hoping to earn 6,000 this year?
Yes, that was right.
Huh?
Yes.
From the vendors?
Mm-hmm, from the vendors.
Out of a $240,000 budget. I'm just trying to get, you know, a sense of where you guys are. And I certainly recognize the difference between your effort and the Laurel Avenue effort, where that's grassroots, self-funded, you know, not asking for anything.
Farmer-run, yeah.
Farmer-run, cooperative, like that kind of thing. And you guys are building a, I won't, I shouldn't say the B-word, the bureaucracy word, but it's on the tip of my tongue to say it, that you're building this enormous, burgeoning, growing, amazing, amazing entity. I want to, I don't know, I can't quite agree with you, Josh, about comparing this with Montgomery County, because I don't know if they ever have any good ideas, and this might be a really good idea, so. And let's see, what other things do I have to note here? I'm trying to make, be quick, be quick. Did I hear that the third year of CDBG funding will be the final year of CDBG funding? So, now we'll get back, then my last kind of comment or note will be where you'll be in five years if that pretty large amount of CDBG funding evaporates after next year. What will you be doing and where will the money be coming from? I note that 8,000 of this 20,000, you're hoping to be, to apply to next year.
Well, as we, as you notice, we've been able to leverage other funds, and the Kaiser Permanente invitation to this special, special round of funding was for requests of 100,000 or above.
Uh-huh.
So that is one venue.
Okay. So you're hoping that in five years, you'll continue to grow and serve a larger population, yet even more, a larger, even than now, of low-income folks who need WIC, Food Stamp, SNAP, that kind of thing, and a large group of local vendors? Do I have that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just quickly, if you don't mind, to answer that first part of your question about other markets that have come.
Ah, good, yes, come back to that.
So what puts us in an exciting and sometimes challenging position is that this is uncharted terrain. When John Hyde started Crossroads in 2007, it was the first market in the country to offer any sort of a double dollars program. As of 2011, there are over 160 markets in 20 states and DC that are offering this model. So, no, there aren't people who've set a precedent, and there isn't a clearly established set of best practices yet. We're working with a lot of those other partners who have been doing it the longest, which might mean two or three years in some situations, to try to work on that together. And we are working with Wholesome Wave, that foundation I mentioned earlier, to sort of streamline things on a national level and figure out where this movement is going. But I'm always amazed by that rate of growth, and I think it's a testament to the viability of this model. And if, so for what it's worth, there aren't best practices, there aren't precedents, but there's a strong network of markets and organizations that's forming across the country to make sure that this isn't something that just collapses a few years in.
Okay, well, that's encouraging. And as far as the funding level for Barb and others of us, I also kind of defer to you, Fred. I can't really pull the idea of continuing to fund you too much, because I've been a proponent of funding the Old Town Business Association on an ongoing basis. And I do note that 8,000 of this 20 would be for next year, so I'm glad that you're planning, but I'm not quite so sure that, but it's, you're pushing it. You're definitely pushing the envelope, so I can't, I'm not really enthusiastic about the whole 20, but I could see some.
Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your patience with the council tonight and hearing this out.
Well, now, Councilmember Snipper has a light on.
But we are, we are expected to give direction tonight, so I appreciate your dedication of time to this topic. And I want to thank you all for being here tonight and your dedication to the market. I know I should disclose to everyone that I am on the, an advisor to the board for the farmer's market, the Crossroads Farmers Market. I am not compensated for that, and I am also a non-voting member, okay? But I, but I do attend most of the board meetings, and I certainly support the market. I, you know, we've had a lot of questions about the details of the farmer's market. I mean, you guys are now, I think, in the analogy, you're the teenagers now, and so we have to ask you questions and examine and question what you're doing. But I think we have to step back and look at the bigger picture. You know, you're, you've really improved the market from this idea and vision into something that's, that's really very well organized now and have many different programs. You do outreach with the, not only the community, but also with the other farmers' markets around the country. But, you know, this council tonight was talking about some of the neighborhoods in the city where we have some special challenges, and your market serves those neighborhoods. The crossroads areas, an area that we recognize, have many family members, many families that have special needs financially, and as do many of the households along Maple Avenue. And so I think as we think about the crossroads farmer's market, we also have to think about how the market and other nonprofit organizations really address the needs of those neighborhoods, and how the market itself may be part of a solution to problems that we have in these areas. I mean, the farmer's market is really not just a market. As we've discussed at the board meetings, you know, you're really building community. It's, it's working to change the fabric of the crossroads area, and it's a piece to the puzzle, as we know with the, all the economic development work that's being envisioned, at least, for along New Hampshire Avenue. The market's just a piece of that. When you talk about the market and you mentioned, you know, the cash contribution of the shoppers, I think that, you mentioned that with a very low percentage, and what that tells me is that maybe you're serving a lower-income constituency than many of the other markets, such as our market here in Old Town, or Old Tacoma, I guess we call it. What, in the interest of keeping the mayor happy, I'm not going to go through and ask you a bunch of questions, but I would ask my colleagues to keep in mind, you know, our earlier discussion in the closed session, and also consider that, you know, this is a, an organization that is growing, it's demonstrated success, it's demonstrated that it is maturing, and still headed on the right track. And so I would suggest that we do continue to support it and fully support the requests this year. And also, just mentioned, because you mentioned in your presentation, but I don't think that you emphasize it as strongly as what I would, is that the young ladies that are here before us tonight are the operators of this farmer's market, and they, there's a lot more they could do and would have done had they been, had more time. And they've put in a lot of time on their, of their own time, in addition to their paid time, to make this market the success that it is now. And what they're asking for with this money is for additional operating money, which will just allow them to put in more time to making this even more successful. I don't know whether it's sustainable, self-sustaining, on into the future, but I have full confidence in these young ladies and the organization that's been, that they've helped to put together. And I don't see how we would, how we would say no at this point in time. I think, I think we should support the full 20,000, and I would think that Mr. Schultz should only be able to say that, yes, he definitely supports the 10,000, while I support the other 10,000 for the contribution you make to the residents on Maple Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Councilmember Snipper.
I support the market, and I would support it at 15,000. Let's go on.
So...
You get the short comic.
So we, so we need to provide the city manager with direction for the proposed budget. Councilmember Snipper has put 15 on the table, are there, other?
Yeah, I would support the full 20,000. I think it's...
Okay, anybody want to put?
I would support 10.
Well, I think Councilmember Wright made a good point earlier about the possibility of, you know, having some of this prior CDGB money, the reprogram because of the risk of it, the challenge of trying to get it all spent between now and September. So for, you know, keeping that in mind, I would support something less than 20,000, maybe 15 would be fine, 15 or 16 in that neighborhood.
That's your neighborhood.
It is your neighborhood.
Other thoughts from other councilmembers?
I'm supportive of 15 and reprogramming five of the CDGB to get to the 20,000 of general operating that they need. Again, you know, I, I can only defer to Councilmember Schultz on what's best for his neighborhood. You know, I think, when I look at, for example, the OTBA, I think that we've, you know, given them 35 or 25 since I've been on the council, that's some of the best money we spend. You know, this is one of the issues that Councilmember Schultz thinks is important, and I think that solution of combining the two together to get to the 20 is something I can be supportive of.
Let me just add that I think that the sentiment up here, this is to address to you, is that, is that the business, the model that you've created, which is almost creating itself, it's growing so fast, and the opportunities are coming fast and furious to you, and it's, the model is changing as you're trying to implement it. But somehow or another, you've got to find a model as well that incorporates community support, because just living off of grants and a tiny, tiny amount of vendor fees probably isn't going to work for a long, you know, forever. But somewhere or another, you need to get the Tacoma Park community invested in it as a, as a valuable, worthy kind of thing to support. You've got Friends of Tacoma Library, for example. Well, I think, once you've done your sales job throughout the community around here, maybe there's a way you can get some support at the grassroots level from people who are, you know, not people who just need these... you know, not people who just need these fresh checks, but the people who believe in the same goals that you're so intensively involved with.
Councilmember Robinson and I both nodded our heads to the proposal for fifteen and reprogram the five. And the reprogramming is a real possibility? Okay. So I think we have consensus on that. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you for your time. Yes. Very much appreciate your guidance and words. Thank you.
Looked like a short break.
Thanks for your ideas.
And we're going to... We're going to take things a little bit out of order. We're going to move to agenda item number five, follow-up discussion on the tree ordinance in the hopes that we can come up with some quick decisions on these items and move through this agenda item in about five minutes.
Yes, no, yes.
So if the city manager would like to ask us questions and we...
I'm going to be really quick here. I think we've had four work sessions today preparing the tree ordinance. There were just a handful of issues I wanted to bring back tonight. One had to do with the credit towards future replacement requirements. We had talked about this at several of the prior work sessions. And the most recent session on January 31st, the council had wanted staff to bring back a proposal to provide more of an incentive than just getting the credit for the size of the tree at planting, as you may have noted on the agenda cover sheet. Everything basically is the same as before, except what staff is now suggesting is that the credit would be based on the size of the tree planted with an assumed simple growth factor of ten percent per year thereafter, which I believe that Councilmember Wright had suggested. What we're looking for tonight is, are you all comfortable with that level of preplanting credit?
And if I can get a clarification on that? That's ten percent per year of the original amount, not compounded?
Yes.
That's the simple, what you mean?
That's the simple.
Okay.
You add one point one five every year.
One point...
One point one, one point two, one point three, one point four?
Oh, from an inch. Gotcha.
Right. If that's acceptable to the council, we'll work with the city attorney's office to draft the necessary language.
Everybody agree that's a good one?
I agree. Works for you?
Unanimous. Sounds good.
Okay. The second issue had to do with the selection of street trees. We had previously suggested that residents would be given a choice of two types of trees for each side of the block. There seemed to be some interest on the part of the council about giving a little bit more choice, so we did talk about that internally. So what we brought back is a choice of three types of trees that would be presented to residents, and we're simply looking for a direction from the council if that would be acceptable.
Yes.
I'm looking for clarification on this one as well. The last bullet point, only the tree selected by the majority of residents on that side. The majority of all residents? The majority of residents responding? The majority of the majority?
The majority of households.
Majority of residents responding. Responding.
Of residents responding.
Or residents.
One vote per household.
Household.
One vote per household.
Per household.
The majority of households who respond?
Who respond.
By the deadline. Okay.
And you're going to provide notice to the city council members so they can help facilitate that conversation, right?
Yes.
Okay. So everybody agree with that one?
Yes.
Okay.
The last item, when we talked about this on the 31st of January, we had some discussion about kind of providing a disclosure for every real estate transaction in the city regarding the tree ordinance. And there'd been some discussion among the council that perhaps some kind of voluntary education efforts would be sufficient. I think staff talked about that a little bit more. And we really, I guess, encouraged the council, I guess, to go ahead and put in some disclosure requirements similar to what we had done for rent stabilization, recognizing there's lots of things that go by at closing, but we really do feel like we want people to know kind of what they're getting into and trying to do it as much as we can to make sure people are familiar with the ordinance requirements. So really, that would be our recommendation. If there's a concurrence from the council, we'll once again work with the city attorney's office to get that language and bring it back to you.
Yeah, I really support that idea.
Head nods, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Unanimous on that one?
That is all we needed this.
And we have one additional item to put with that? Councilmember Clay?
So this is about the trees that went in on Woodland Avenue. So we've had some conversations with the council about that. And so the recommendation is that I would meet with the seven residents on Woodland Avenue who had initially expressed an interest in being able to select their street trees. And you'll remember that I offered to go and meet with the residents and coordinate with them to talk to them about the possible selection of street trees, but the city wasn't ready to implement that activity yet. And so there's been some conflict over the street trees then that ended up being planted there. And so the proposal is that I would go and meet with the seven residents who have trees in front of their houses to get a group decision from them about whether or not they want to continue with those trees or whether or not they would like to...
These are the sweet gums.
These are the sweet gum trees with the little balls that can... You need to keep getting it.
Have we heard about that from somebody?
I don't know. I have just...
Is that anything about the acorns or the...
Yeah, exactly. Dangerous children and all that. Anyway, find out what their choice is, and if they request that the trees be replanted with another tree, then we would go ahead and replant those trees and that it'd be funded out of the street tree fund.
Is there...
I think we should replace them with Osage trees. You know what those are?
No.
Big green ones.
Oh, right.
When I was a kid, we used to roll them out from the street as cars would go by. They're about the size of grapefruit. Aren't they?
Very thorny.
Remember that we're getting through this item in five minutes.
Sorry.
That's my...
Yes.
The only thing I was just going to add is just based on my conversation with the city arborist, is that the trees likely will not survive transplanting. So just wanted to make sure you all understood that.
But we don't know if that will be necessary yet. Okay. There's agreement on that item as well? Councilmember Wright?
I just had a question, because I know we've had a lot of discussion about different tree items. Did we come to any resolution about using city funds to plant trees on private property? That was the only remaining question I had. I had reached resolution on that.
Someone can correct me if I'm wrong. My recollection is that the council was okay with staff's recommendation, which was simply to try to support that effort, perhaps through subsidizing the cost of trees planted through the Bolt Buy program. That's it. We'll be working with the city attorney's office to amend the code per the council's recommendations. We'll be bringing that back at some future date for your review.
Okay. Good. We're finished with that item. We will now go back to number four. We did that item in seven minutes.
You're thinking we're going to do this one.
I said five to ten. The city manager said five. We will now try and do the pilot discussion in a similarly expedited fashion. And Ms. Danes is here to help us expedite the conversation.
As noted in the memorandum that was included in your packet for this particular item, we have received a number of inquiries about proposed pilots that would come before the city council prior to the beginning of fiscal year twelve. Recognizing that there are a number of ongoing concerns regarding the city's financial resources and based on past observations of recent conversations with other nonprofit entities regarding... Who had submitted requests for pilots, we thought it would be appropriate to have a general conversation with the city council regarding any policy decisions it would like to make regarding future pilots. As noted in various email conversations, PILOT stands for payment in lieu of taxes. If you are familiar with PILOTs in other jurisdictions outside of Maryland, the name is a little misleading because it's not really a payment in lieu of taxes. It's basically an exception or exemption from property taxes. So while it implies that you're getting something financial in return for giving property taxes, that's not actually the case in Maryland. It's just what they call it.
Do we have to call it PILOT?
You have to call it a PILOT to get it through the... You can call it whatever you want to, but when it comes to the actual ordinance that's being adopted, yes, it has to be a PILOT. We had submitted in preparation for this conversation in a hope to facilitate... In an effort to facilitate the conversation, a questionnaire to each of the council members. And I want to thank you for returning those questionnaires and spending so much thought and time in responding that we thought might be helpful. And rather than go point by point through the questionnaire, there were four general areas that we wanted to get some feedback from you to decide how to proceed, not only for the five pilots that we have pending right now, but future conversations regarding requests that may come in from other nonprofit organizations. Many of you may have received an email that we sent out towards the end of the day that identified what the sources of those pending pilots and the dollar value associated with them. If they were to be approved as proposed, it would be roughly thirty-five thousand dollars beginning in FY twelve. Right now, you have roughly sixty-one thousand dollars in approved pilots that will go into effect or will be effective during fiscal year twelve. So the basic question or the basic topic we'd like some discussion on or consensus on is how you want to proceed with our proposal to develop a policy regarding future pilots. Would you like to continue to review them on a case-by-case basis, which has historically been the case? Or are you interested in developing a formal policy, establishing specific guidelines or parameters for the review of future pilots? Another topic that came up during the questionnaire was the possibility of placing a moratorium on the issuance or the review of any new pilots until such point as the council is more comfortable with the city's financial resources, particularly for FY twelve. So we have a couple of questions. Basically, do you want to continue to review pilots on a case-by-case basis? If not, are you comfortable working with staff to develop a policy with specific guidelines as far as how future pilots should be reviewed? And thirdly, are you interested in establishing a moratorium, albeit a short-term one, until either the financial issues are resolved as far as the city's upcoming budget or until specific guidelines are developed and a specific policy is approved by the council?
And I could go with Councilmember Clay first.
I don't think that we should do a moratorium on pilots right now. So what I want to say about this is that I think what's the most important thing about us having pilots in the city of Tacoma Park is that it... The reason why I think we do a pilot is because we give a little bit of money to an entity that is purchasing a property in Tacoma Park that they are agreeing to keep as affordable housing for a period of time. Oftentimes, when they've been coming to us, it's been forty years, but in twenty... You know, twenty to forty years, depending on what programs they're under. And in exchange for that, we have an entity then that encumbers this number of units or this building as affordable housing that is means-tested affordable housing, which means that the percentage of the units are available to people at a particular percentage of the area median income, like fifty percent of the units might be available at fifty percent of area median income, or in some cases, a hundred percent of the units are available at something like eighty percent of area median income. So to me, the value of purchasing... Of giving a little bit of money to the pilot is what we're doing is we're encouraging people to come to Tacoma Park and purchase the multi-unit buildings and be players in the community in the affordable housing arena. And that has been beneficial to us because I think when we have had properties that have been in distress and we have been looking for someone to come along and help us out with those properties, we've really needed these people to be able to come into our community. And MHP and other players have been our friends in helping with this. Just recently, the Housing Opportunities Commission has come into Tacoma Park and really helped in the Aspen Court area, where they bought one building and then another one, and then finally the third one, when this whole kind of group of buildings got into trouble. And so one of the reasons why I don't want to see us do a moratorium on this is because the first thing that will happen as soon as we do a moratorium is someone will come along and they're going to want ten or twenty thousand dollars to make...
An exception.
Yeah, they're going to want an exception. And we're going to want to give it to them because we're going to want them to do something with one of these buildings, like, you know, the building that's right down the street that I don't know how long it sat there with, you know, boards all around it and...
Years and years.
And thank goodness that we had one of these nonprofit entities that was able to come in and buy this building and help us out. So for that reason, I would hope that we would not put a moratorium on the pilots. The other thing that I would like to say is that, you know, pilots could be part of a broader affordable housing strategy. And, you know, we may get to the point where we want to talk about that, but I don't think we're quite ready to talk about that right now. For one thing, I'd like to see the 2010 census data come back and tell us kind of what the story is that that tells. But in the meantime, I would say that I wouldn't give money for a pilot unless what we got back out of it was a new purchase of affordable units that were means-tested in the city. And I wouldn't spend pilot money helping to, you know, buy down the cost of a building for a current owner, whether they were a private owner or a nonprofit owner. And so people often make the statement that like, well, what's the difference then between private landlords and the nonprofit landlords? And I would say I wouldn't distinguish between those in terms of giving a pilot, except that we don't have private landlords who are coming to us and saying, hey, in exchange for a pilot of twenty thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars or forty thousand dollars, I'm going to commit to having a building for forty years that's going to be affordable to people at fifty percent of the area median or eighty percent of the area median. And if they came and said that, I would say, great. I would absolutely consider a private landowner for a pilot. But that's, you know, that's not what's happening. And so to me, what's really important about the pilot is it gives us an opportunity to bring investment... Building investment into our community. It leverages lots of outside dollars because we're doing it through the low-income housing tax credit program. We're partnering with these low-income housing tax credit dollar groups. They're selling the tax credits. They're getting money for those tax credits, and they're investing that money in the... In that building. And so, you know, we're getting some security then for having a quality building there and a quality place for people to live. So that's what I think is important about it. That was... That's what I think the criteria would be. And then under that criteria, one of the pilots that we were forwarded would... It was the one for thirteen thousand dollars would fit that criteria. And the thing that I would say about that is, you know, I think we're definitely getting more careful about how we spend money. I would point out that we just agreed to spend, you know, fifteen thousand dollars in a single year for an activity. Thirteen thousand dollars to get... To help people buy a building in our community that's going to remain affordable for forty years comparatively, you know, isn't that much money. And if we look at it, at the impact of executed pilot agreements on the city budget, you can see that next year, there's... You know, there's... We're only dropping off two thousand dollars, but that's unusual. If you look at the drop-off from previous years, they've been pretty good. Now, last year, we spent a lot of money on pilots, but the drop-off this year is to fifty-nine, but then in the 2013 year, it drops to forty-seven thousand. So I don't know how that thirteen thousand dollars is spread out if it's thirteen thousand dollars a year. So that would, you know, we'd run about even for most of that time period, so...
If I could clarify for that particular property, that is not a purchase of a building... It would not be a new property owner. It would be a continuation of the existing property owner. They currently do not have a pilot from the city, just from the county.
Do they currently have affordability restrictions?
Yes. Yes.
Well, then I would say if we're not buying affordability restrictions, what are we buying? Because I got the impression that that building was... There was a purchased building?
No.
No?
They would just be refinancing for purposes of low-income housing tax credits, which would allow them to undertake a fairly extensive energy retrofit of their property doing geothermal, a variety of different things, very similar along the lines of what was done at the Franklin Apartments recently.
Councilmember Snipper.
How long is their current encumbrance?
Excuse me?
How long is their current encumbrance? Their currently low-income housing encumbered for how long?
I do not know the answer to that question. We haven't gotten anything formal from them as yet.
Okay.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you. Couple things. One, I don't actually support means testing. That's what I call the conservatives' approach. My observation with a lot of other programs that do means testing is that it creates a stigma. It also creates a bureaucracy of some kind to measure and track the income, generates a lot of privacy concerns about whether, who's going to hold the information about people's incomes. And, you know, fundamentally, conservatives like the idea of having programs for poor people, deserving poor kind of concept. And I just think you get much more support when you have what are called universal programs that everybody participates in. So I'm just in general not a fan of means testing. I think it has a lot of issues around it. Having said that, however, I want to say something else about pilots in Tacoma Park as we've been doing them as a kind of housing, affordable housing policy. I have plenty of questions and concerns about it as a housing policy because I, for one thing, it's not always affordable housing. Sometimes the percentages of the median income are quite high. But nevertheless, I'd like to see how it works. So I'm happy that we have a number of properties under it, and it gives us an opportunity to see how pilots work, actually, because we have 30 years of experience with rent stabilization in Tacoma Park. And at least I, and a lot of the tenants who come to testify, thinks it works reasonably well in Tacoma Park. So I'd like to use, you know, this as an opportunity to compare two models of affordable housing. And we have actual experience with both in Tacoma Park, and so at some future date, we could have a discussion, a meaningful discussion, I think, about affordable housing policy, because we'd have the experience to draw on. I, on the moratorium issue, I really am very conflicted. The reasons that Colleen has made about, you know, moratorium are just not a great policy idea. On the other hand, we're in a very tight budget situation, and it's just really going to be hard to carve out those kinds of dollars for this. If there was some other way of working on this that wasn't exactly a moratorium, I'd be interested in hearing about it. And I'll stop there.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'm of a couple of different minds on this. One, I think a moratorium, an indefinite moratorium, is a good idea at this point in time because it's sending a message that of what we consider to be the relative importance of pilots in light of all the other needs that where there's a shortage of resources to meet in this city. And we're going to be dealing with that in the next couple of months as we put together this budget. But having said that, I also do think we absolutely do need to have a policy on how we're going to evaluate and make decisions on pilots, because the stuff of kind of, on a case-by-case basis, each one is unique. I think it makes it difficult for us, and I think it makes it difficult for staff, and it really makes it pretty difficult probably for the applicants themselves, because they're not sure what they're going to get when they come before us, or what they need to be expecting, or what the guidelines might be. So I think it would do us a good service to develop those guidelines or policies, or whatever you want to call them. A couple of things that concern me is that now that it's understood that the city does these pilots or tax exemptions, it's pretty natural for every developer who's got affordable housing either that they own or control now or they'd like to develop the sort of thing, well, the first thing we need to do is to get a pilot. And I'd rather it be the last thing that they do, because what it basically means is that they're just factoring in the fact that Tacoma Park is going to be a soft touch for a tax exemption, and we can always build that into our model when we go for financing. And I'd rather it be, well, we'll consider the, doing the pilot after you've demonstrated to us that you've exhausted all your sources of financing, and this is what's going to make the difference. And if you can't give us this pilot, what can you give us? And if you can't give us this pilot, they can tell us, well, this is what's going to happen to our project because we're running short of money. Because frankly, when you have these candidates coming forward asking for, we don't know what the, whether they actually, whether it's instrumentally, going to be instrumental in whether or not they go forward or not. They can say it is, but how are we going to judge that? And I, you know, what's, then, you know, just sort of say, it's open season. And I don't want that to be the situation. And I think we need to expect a, some diligence, just as much diligence on their, on the stuff that they submit to us as they would to any other financing entity that might be coming in, including their own equity partners. And that'll force them to really sharpen their pencils before they come to us to make sure that if they say, well, we need a pilot of X dollars, then we will know, everybody will know that they actually need that pilot of X dollars. And we don't sit here and say, well, maybe if you can't give us this, can you give us that? Kind of a situation. I don't think that's appropriate for us to be in this position, because I feel like, I feel like we're getting a little bit manipulated in those kind of circumstances. So those are just some thoughts. I mean, I do like the idea of our being able to have this tool at our hand to facilitate or to preserve affordable housing in the cases where you've got a property that is falling into disrepair, and it's clear that market, the general market isn't going to absorb that building and renovate it, and this will do something to make that difference. Or where you have a project that's going to go out of affordable into market-rate housing, those are the areas where I think, you know, I'd like to see us use our ability to give a tax waiver. But otherwise, that's what I want to say at this point. And when I say, well, the other thing is when I say indefinite, I simply mean not forever, but just because we're only a city council that is seated for two-year terms. I don't know that we can go forward and say it's going to be X number of years, but we're just saying that until we see the situation change financially for the city, this is that we're just going to back off from doing these. And then let the developers know that so that they can make their decisions accordingly. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
I need a clarification, and I think you partially answered one of the questions. My question was, do nonprofits pay property tax? I know they don't pay income tax, but do they pay property tax?
Nonprofits like Montgomery Housing Partnership do pay property taxes. However, as noted in the email that we sent you out earlier, places like the Washington McLaughlin Senior Housing Apartments or the Montgomery County Coalition for the Homeless, up until recently, where it could be exempted from state, county, and local property taxes by an action taken by the state. That has changed recently. So now if they are to become exempt from paying local, excuse me, local or county property taxes, it has to be a formal action by that particular governing body. So they don't...
All right. Let me stop there for a second. Let me see if I got that part. Adventist Hospital doesn't pay because they're a religious or a medical organization?
I believe it's because they're a nonprofit medical association.
Nonprofit medical. But, and religions don't pay property tax.
Correct.
But other nonprofits might do unless they get a waiver from the state. But now the state has said, no, we're changing our mind now if they get a waiver from the local. Do I have that? So did I get what you said so far?
Correct.
Okay. Then go, I'm sorry.
At least as far as it applies to housing providers, which is where we've been focusing our efforts.
Okay. Were you going to continue your answer, or did I get it?
I just wanted to clarify, as far as pilots are concerned, the way the legislation is written, the state allows municipalities and counties to enter into pilot agreements and exempt formally organized nonprofit housing providers that set aside a specific percentage of their units for households that specify percentages of the AMI. For-profit developers, for example, are not, do not qualify for a pilot based on that state law.
Okay, that's confusing too, and I'm kind of, I'm trying to explore a little bit the line drawn between nonprofits, for-profits, big buildings and small buildings. And MHP came to us, I think they're a nonprofit.
MHP is a nonprofit.
But they were very clear in saying that the buildings that they were asking us for pilots for were spinning off to for-profits and investment groups. And so, and that is...
It's just they're just selling their tax credits as a form of raising equity for their property.
So they were getting the tax, the exemption from us, also known as pilot, and then selling that pilot to the...
No, 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 no. There's a federal program that allows them to get tax credits from federal taxes, income taxes, and then sell those to a business that actually needs the tax write-off. That's how the low-income tax credit program works.
Yes, that's exactly right. They get all money upfront, rather than gets parsed out over a 20- or 40-year period of tax.
That's fine, and so I see where, I sort of understand what you...
Because they use the money for rehab.
It's easier to get it reauthorized.
I see. But as far as the property tax goes, MHP...
Pays property taxes.
Pays property taxes, even though they're a nonprofit, because the state didn't grant them this exemption.
Historically, MHP has always paid property taxes. The Coalition for the Homeless and the Washington McLaughlin Senior Apartments, for some reason, did not, are, were...
Did not pay, but now they're...
Did not pay, but now they...
That exemption was taken from them to some extent, and now they're asking us to provide the exemption.
Correct.
Okay. So that sort of clarifies, I can't say it completely clarifies, the distinction between nonprofit and for-profit and the payment of property taxes for me, and I appreciate that clarification. As far as the big building, small building goes, I'm, what if a nonprofit bought a small housing complex of four or six units and then came to us and said, well, we want an exemption, a pilot, because we're a nonprofit? We could grant it to them. Is that correct?
Correct. If they set aside...
Sort of like the Washington McLaughlin Senior Apartments.
Correct. If they set aside a specific number of units for households within certain income ranges.
Okay. So this is a way to provide affordable housing. It's kind of round the long side and back around, and seems to me, anyway, it's a kind of a complex path to providing affordable housing. And it's for specific people, and it sounds like it's means-testing.
Correct.
Okay. So this also implies means-testing, but I also think that, based on a conversation I had with Councilmember Clay, that we don't have to test the means, that that's done at some other governmental level, at the state or federal level. Am I right in that?
Correct.
Okay. Although I do share Councilmember Snipper's notion that it provides a second-class sort of citizen, maybe not second-class, but lower class, at least a lower-income-class citizen where there's a distinction made, and I'm a little uncomfortable with that, although I see the wisdom in trying to be able to count how many affordable units we have, which leads me to my next, and I think final comment and question, which is the percentage of affordable housing that we provide. We asked this last time we went around this bush, and right now, all of our rental housing is affordable in Tacoma Park because of the rent stabilization. If you define that as a way to deliver affordable housing, this path is defining affordable housing in a little bit different way, in that we're counting people who are in there, and if they are low-income, then therefore it must be affordable because they're paying a lower rent, something along those lines. Am I okay so far? Are you with me? I know I'm like covering ground like a roadrunner.
Right. I think it would be, rent stabilization does provide affordable, rent stabilization limits the amount of rent increases that can be applied to a tenant to a certain dollar or a percentage...
Right.
...each year, and the frequency of those. That does not necess...
It puts the burden of subsidizing both low-income and higher, potentially higher-income people directly on the shoulders of the landlords.
Right. So it does, I think it would be not necessarily appropriate to equate rent stabilization with affordable housing, because affordable housing, depending upon how you define it, is based in large part on the income of the household.
Okay. So in that case, what you're saying, I think, is that rent stabilization isn't really the same as affordable housing in that definition.
Using that as a definition, no, because it's income.
Using the definition of making housing available to people who can't afford more expensive housing, rent stabilization isn't the same, isn't a clear affordable housing alternative, although I take Ruben's point that at least it treats everybody the same.
It treats everyone the same, and it's affordable rents.
Okay, affordable rents. So, and I asked this before, and I don't really expect an answer, but does Montgomery County have a goal for the amount of affordable housing they would like to see provided in the county as a whole?
They do have a dollar, or they do have a unit, I think they have a goals by units. They have adopted an affordable housing policy that we can get you copies for. I know that they're big...
I'm looking for where they are and where they try to get to.
In terms of numbers?
Yeah, and I think I asked you this before, and I think you said that we provide in that loose definition of sustainable...
They consider Tacoma Park to be a hotbed of affordable housing.
Hotbed of affordable housing.
Yeah, we're actually a major portion of Montgomery County's...
We're a major contributor.
We are their affordable housing policy.
We are their affordable housing policy. That's a really good statement there.
I understand.
So, and given that, I'm not feeling this great inner push, and forgive me for saying this, especially to people of lower means who I completely respect, but I'm not feeling this great overwhelming gushing push to provide more affordable housing. And I see the elements that are on the table here, and I'm not against affordable housing at all, but I'm kind of, I'm having a hard time with pilots, I got to say, even, and it's not only because I disagree with the acronym and the meaning of the acronym in the state of Maryland or wherever we are, but I'm having a real hard...
Is it that late?
It's that late. I'm having a real hard time with pilots, so I'll just throw that out there. Thank you for clarifying.
We're currently in some alternate universe.
I think we are in an alternate universe.
Councilmember White.
First, I want to quickly address Councilmember Snipper's issue around means-testing and rent control being a program that benefits all. It doesn't benefit all people, right? There's a whole bunch of homeowners in Tacoma Park that don't get any benefit from it. And programs that I think he's referring to that are very successful at the federal level, like Medicare and Social Security, are programs that generally benefit everyone, and everyone pays something into them, sometimes different amounts based on income over time. This is not an example of one of those programs. This is an example of a program where a set number of people, renters, are, it's a different means-test, do you rent a house or do you own the house, benefit from the policy. And as an economist, I think there's more efficient ways for us to distribute the public subsidy. Now, is that... Now, is that saying that I should, think we should end rent control tomorrow? No, but I do think that there is a pathway, we're not going to solve it tonight, and I think I agree with Councilmember Clay, that this is something we need to think about over time. There probably is a pathway to transition from our current way to a means-tested way. Now, means-tested doesn't mean that everyone who lives in an apartment building has to meet that means test. And actually, the way the, we provide affordable housing, rent-controlled right now, basically causes that to happen in the city. Now, if you, if you didn't have rent control, you'd have a developer who could develop a property that had both market-rate units and low-income affordable units, and they could mix tax credits in there to subsidize the low-income affordable units. You don't get that because the developer can't charge market rates on those, on those units that are not, that are not affordable, that are not subsidized and affordable through tax credits, and therefore they won't develop, they won't buy a property. So that's, that's the reality of what's happening based on the policy. And the, the real issue is when you have concentrated poverty, when you tell all the low-income people they have to live in one building. And that's kind of basically what we've created. And, you know, fortunately Tacoma Park is not, is not huge, and those, those geographic areas can be relatively small within the city, so you get people from all different means going to the same school system, so you don't get all of the negative impacts of concentrated poverty. But that's the reality of our system. If we want to have a larger discussion about examining that, I think I'm totally open to that. In the short term, I think that I'm, I also agree with Councilmember Clay that we shouldn't put a moratorium on, on this. It is a tool that we should have available in our toolbox in certain situations. Because we're in tighter budget times, that make, might make us less likely to grant or use that tool, and perhaps we could develop some loose criteria for people to understand generally what we're, we're thinking about using pilots for in the current budget climate. But it's, it's not like someone's going to buy a car, right, and they need to know, gee, is this tax break there or not? Any one of these deals is incredibly complex, and they're going to come, and they're putting together all these pieces of the puzzle, and part of the piece of the puzzle is going to be a conversation with us. They're not going to do that at the very end, although it's kind of been portrayed like that sometimes. They're going to do, and we could actually encourage them to come earlier, so they knew, hey, we're not going to give it to you, or we'll give it to you based on, on what they're proposing. And to me, the criteria should be really around value for the city. So if you look at 7610, which is the, the property that Colleen cited, which was boarded up for many years, and you can see the metamorphosis that's happening to that building every time you walk by it or drive by it, it's, it's pretty amazing. Everything from the grounds around it and the, all the work they're doing with retaining walls, to the, the work you can tell is going on inside the apartments and to the facade. That's very different than, you know, either of these, any of these situations that we're talking about, these three pilot requests. They're not, they're not figuring out a way to buy a new property and they need a certain additional piece of leverage, or do a huge renovation to a, a, a property. So, you know, we have three in front of us. I think Franklin Apartments did something very similar to what the Essex House is proposing and didn't get a pilot. So I propose that they should, should move forward with that without a pilot. The other two are kind of tricky, because apparently we've given them a pilot in the past. When did that end? Well, we didn't get, the state granted them a pilot from us. No.
Yes.
Four seven. What?
What's the...
She's saying four seven. Those don't...
No, 7901 Lochne and, and 6501 Poplar.
Yeah, those are all that sector.
Yeah, they've never had a pilot.
They've never had a pilot from us, but did they have to, the question is, did they pay taxes to the city of Tacoma Park or not?
The homeless coalition, on the properties that historically they have owned, they did not pay property taxes on them. They are acquiring a new property that has, has had property taxes paid on it, but if, once they were to purchase it, it would be the loss of those property taxes. So three of them, yes.
Okay. That's actually very helpful, because I think one of the dynamics we have to realize is that we're also already giving a break to entities like this. So if they go, you, you know why they buy a lot of properties in Tacoma Park? Because we have rent stabilization, and if they don't buy them, the market value of those properties is significantly reduced. If one of those properties was anywhere else in the county, the market rate for that property would be much, much higher. So already, we're giving a subsidy on the purchase. So just, just the simple financing that they, point from which they start, is already in a much better place based on basically a subsidy through rent stabilization.
That may be true for many property owners. In this particular case, they're acquiring properties that have gone into foreclosure.
For-profit people don't have a problem.
No, I'm just talking about the homeless coalition.
No, I know, but I'm saying if this were somewhere else in the county, for-profit developers live on acquiring stuff out of foreclosure. They love that. They get a good deal and then they, so I don't think that, that, in our situation, it's hard because a for-profit developer is going to come in and take the risk of the foreclosure and whatever's happened to the property, and then not be able to charge market-rate rents. No, for-profit developers rarely gonna, gonna do that. They might buy it and turn it into a six-unit or nine-unit condo building, I guess, but they're not gonna use it as a rental building. So in situations where someone already owned a property and they originally made the purchase around it, and all the economics work on the fact that they weren't paying taxes based on some state law, and that state law has changed, I'd be open to, I'm not necessarily absolutely committing to, I'd be open to having that conversation about whether they could continue with a pilot granted by us as opposed to the state. But if they're, they're buying a new property in those, in those situations, and are looking for the city to give a $1,400 subsidy per year, I just don't think that, for the value that that's delivering to the, to the city around the pilot, it's just, it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense to me. And it doesn't sound to me like they're transforming the building in a way that 7610 Maple Avenue's being transformed. Maybe there's a set of, a workup around it that's different than just us giving them what's called a operating expense subsidy, basically. So that's my shortest, I don't think we should do a moratorium. It should be a tool that we use. There should be a higher bar now, and I think it's based on delivering, you know, delivering value to the, to the city around affordable housing.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you. Kind of agree with the, with the last three conclusions that Councilmember Wright mentioned. I, I will not comment on all of his positions prior to that, but I, as far as the means test goes, I, I would like to suggest that, you know, there's a, there seems to be a feeling that we have a lot of people in affordable housing or rent-stabilized housing in Tacoma Park that are just taking advantage of the lower-cost housing, and I think that's, there hasn't been anyone who's produced any evidence that that's true at this point. And I would like to suggest that instead of, of having a means test on future affordable housing, we should just do a statistically valid sampling of existing affordable housing in Tacoma Park to see whether or not that really is an issue. My perception from my constituents along Maple Avenue is that, you know, this is not a, a real abuse of our affordable housing in Tacoma Park at this time. So I, I don't know whether that means that we, you know, do a, an assessment of the census data, what comes out. I don't know if that's possible. Maybe a statistical sampling through surveys. I don't know what the approach is, but I would suggest that would be a whole lot easier than implementing some bureaucracy to track the means of residents that are in some future affordable housing plan in the city. Thank you.
I find myself agreeing with Councilmember Clay and Councilmember Wright. My sense is that there were two people up here who wanted, who indicated that you wanted a moratorium. I'm looking at two colleagues on the end.
Hmm, sort of...
Did you kind of go there? There were two solid moratorium votes.
Right, that's what I said.
Okay. So I think we have reached a point where we were saying, no, we don't want to do a moratorium. It sounded to me like there were some, there was consensus on some, some items to put in a policy that we would want to make clear to people so that they had a good idea, and I, maybe this, maybe this is showing my bias, but I, but I...
Bruce, what? You have bias?
Yes, I have opinions too. And at 11:06 at night, I'm not sure I can adequately express them.
I think at 11:06 at night, you'd be more willing to freely share them.
And I, I thought Councilmember Clay elucidated some points that made a, made a sensible approach toward items for a, for kind of guidelines for what, what we're looking for, and it was purchase of buildings and other pieces that flowed from, from there.
Can I make one quick comment? I was, I was trying, I wrote this note, I was trying to kind of come up with some formulaic way to encourage affordable housing, and I came up with some percentage of the price of a unit as a, as a way to give back to the owner or, of the property. And given that, I'm looking at the per-unit costs on the three things we have here, 100, 625, and 1416, and it just, it strikes me how different those are. If we're trying to get, if we're trying to make something fair and universal instead of evaluating each request, we have to find some way to do that, where it's, where we get something comparable.
I guess my sense was that we would probably in the end want to evaluate the requests. We wouldn't just say if it doesn't meet the criteria, that's it. But, but that if we provided the criteria so that people would know whether it was worth pursuing or not, that that would be very helpful, and then that there could be some fine-tuning of whatever did come forward.
I was, I guess I get fearful of evaluating each person, particularly with the Attorney General saying that property tax exemptions for, for nonprofits are no longer available or are becoming less available, that, that we, we might be put in a position of having to evaluate each and every nonprofit who owns any building in the city as they come forth and ask for an exemption of some sort or another.
Can I comment?
Sure.
Look, you know, the Attorney General's decision is basically taking away the state's property tax exemption for these organizations. Is, am I not correct? And therefore, it's obligating or forcing or pushing these nonprofits to come to the counties and the municipalities to make up the difference.
Because they're passing the buck.
Because they're passing the buck.
That first sounds like buck, exactly.
Yeah.
They're passing the decision.
Yeah. Yeah. But I mean, and so a, a nonprofit can say legitimately, well, you guys have got to make up what the state would have done, or else we just can't do this project. And that could be true. So it's just, we're getting a stick in the eye from the state of Maryland because they're trying to work their way out of having this, losing property taxes, and we're getting, in a sense, put into the position morally of trying to figure out how, well, how can we do this? I don't like that. The other question I had is, has anybody ever tried to determine how much affordable housing, how many units of the rental inventory, the universe of rental inventory in the city qualifies as affordable? I mean...
That went through there.
Well, I mean, you know, I guess you'd go, you'd, you'd match it up against what the standards are in the, in the Washington metropolitan area for a certain-sized unit, what that average is and what it isn't to Tacoma Park, and, and from that, you could sort of say, maybe all the rental housing in the city is, is 100% affordable, and all we're doing is gilding the lily. I don't, I don't know. I'm just asking, because I think it would be useful for a discussion.
Okay, I could tell you that in...
We've had data on that in the past.
In 2000, 41% of the folks living in occupied rental units were paying more than 30% of their income for rent.
Where?
In Tacoma Park.
And 30% tends to be the standard that is used? That includes utility costs as well as rent?
That's calculating it from the household's ability to pay. I was looking at it from a different perspective, and what the market rate is and what rents are in Tacoma Park.
Fred, we know the rents are way lower, 20% or so lower than the rest of this surrounding area.
So by definition, everything in, 100% of our housing is affordable, our rental housing is affordable. Now, it was just a question, do you want to make it even more affordable?
Again, it goes back to how you define affordable.
Right.
And here, you can look, you can look at the, at the cheer chart that they did, and you can see that in, in Tacoma Park, percent below 80% of area median income in 2000, that was...
Tacoma Park was 42%.
Tacoma Park was 42%, Montgomery County was 27%. And for people at 50%, Tacoma Park was 31%, and Montgomery County was 17%. And for people at below 30%, Tacoma Park was 17%, Montgomery County was 8%. So yes, we're the affordable housing policy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're just a regular fountain of knowledge.
That's what you invited me for, right?
Mayor, I think I interrupted you first.
Are we having an affordable housing discussion, discussion of pilots?
And Councilmember Wright is the only one with a light on, so...
So I just want to clarify what the state did with the Attorney General's ruling, because I, I'm not sure that Councilmember Schultz quite has it right.
I may not.
So I, I want to clarify. My understanding of what I read before and what I heard you saying was that previously, the state could exempt an organization from property taxes at all levels of government, state, county, and local.
I'm going to turn it over to John. This is John, he's with the homeless coalition and has been having this ongoing conversation with the Attorney General's office, and he might be able to better...
I can try to answer a few questions. First of all, one thing to sort of differentiate, we're not Montgomery Housing Partnership. The whole real estate entity of Montgomery County Coalition for the Homeless, myself, has only been in existence for about four or five years. So those organizations, both within Montgomery County and elsewhere in the state, that have gotten the exemption from the state, essentially knocking out all property taxes, are small affordable housing, special-needs housing, and then some elderly properties. So it's not, basically not the large tax-credit developers and the larger, um, nonprofit developers. It's special-needs organizations doing, largely doing small-scale development. The other thing is that the state Attorney General just is not, basically not talking to us. So we're talking back and forth with the State Department of Assessment and Taxation. The procedure that had been in place there was, we would apply, once we bought something, and just routinely, you know, routinely, within a matter of two, three months, we would get this letter saying, you're exempt in perpetuity. All of a sudden, it's been two years ago, June, the State Department of Assessment and Taxation said, we're not sure what's going on. The Attorney General is saying they might be changing that. We've been attempting to engage the Attorney General's office in, you know, what's going on, give us some details. They are just... They are just, they're sort of obfuscating. So all of us are in a position of, you know, wondering whether this is a strict final determination or whether we're just, they're just doing this because their budget is tight and they are, you know, kind of kicking the can down the road, so.
But what is specifically potentially happening, right? So before, the state said, you don't have to pay property taxes to us or the local government, right?
Correct. Correct. It was an exemption of all property taxes except for things of the nature of stormwater refuse fees.
But the state was basically saying, we're deciding for the municipalities
That's correct.
Whether we're going to force people, whether they have to pay the taxes to the municipalities.
That's correct.
And the Attorney General's ruling is, or what we think their perspective is, is that, no, the state should decide for the state, the county should decide for the county.
The state is not even accepting the application for the state. The state is saying, you have to work through your county, your municipality first, and then we'll review it. So we have, I mean, we have a property with $35,000 in property taxes in Bethesda. We just put 32 homeless folks in over the last couple of months. And we got the county to waive, you know, their $27,000, $28,000 worth of taxes there. State has not even answered. Are they going to give us an exemption there? So the state is definitely taking a position that's very
But it's definitely, it seems definitely the state's saying it's up to the municipality, which to me is actually a good thing. It's actually, the state's actually saying the municipality is bearing the cost of the housing in the location and should make a determination themselves about whether they want to give a pilot, to use that odd term, or not.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's a good thing. It seems like the state's returning some power to us.
Just because we were to say we were to do that doesn't obligate the state to cooperate, is what we're hearing, is that the state is sort of saying, we're not saying anything.
But the state's property tax is the smallest, is the small piece, right? The county's the biggest?
The county's the biggest.
And then we're probably about one-third or one-half of what the county is, I would say.
Your, I don't know, and my properties in Tacoma Park, yours, something like 70, 60, 70% of the county's taxes.
Sounds about right. But we get to be the ones who raise the taxes. We look like the bad guys, then, in a way.
Well, no, we could say, hey, in a situation where they were getting the, in a previous situation, hey, you were getting it before, we could say, hey, we'll continue to give it to you. But on new projects, they have to come to us, and we have to decide.
Right, right.
Just to clarify what John was saying, nonprofit housing providers like MHP were not eligible for this exemption, but because they are very specialized in the type of housing that they provide, the same thing with the Washington-McLaughlin development for seniors, for homeless folks. I'm assuming disability, disabled housing would also fall into that category. So it's a very small niche that is being affected by this recent action or inaction by the state.
Appreciate the clarification.
Yeah, thank you, John.
Very much.
Councilmember Clay.
I would agree with the statement that what we're talking about in terms of the Homeless Coalition property is money that we don't already have in hand. So that decision is not about giving up money at this point. A question about the Washington-McLaughlin property. Do they get a property exemption for the entire property, then, because they had those units there?
That's a much longer conversation, but suffice it to say that for a period of time, they were getting 100% exemption on, 100% of the property.
Wow, because there's only like nine units there, right?
It was then reassessed recently, and that is no longer the case.
Okay, thank you.
And I will make the observation that if one were to accept Councilmember Snipper's characterization of the conservative approach, that it appears that the majority of the Tacoma Park City Council might be taking the conservative approach.
Was there a conservative approach again?
Means testing.
Right.
Which might be newsworthy.
Yeah, it would be.
I would say that kind of falls into the perspective that in Tacoma Park, I might be considered a moderate, whereas everyone else in the world is considered someone far, far to the left.
Exactly. As a Green, I'm kind of puzzled by being considered a conservative.
What else do you need from us tonight?
I am walking away from this with the assumption that you would like to continue to review pilots on a case-by-case basis. And given that conversation, I believe that CPDC will be before you next week for a request for a pilot for the Essex House. They are applying for low-income housing tax credits to refinance the property and to undertake a $36 million, an enormous renovation of that particular property. And it's on the, is it on the rolling agenda for next week?
And $13,005 is going to make the difference on the $36 million project.
We have, one of the things that we do in our defense, if you will, when you have seen pilots or requests come before you, we have tried to stress with the applicants that they should be as realistic and pragmatic about their request as possible, so that don't ask for the moon if you really only need a piece of Seattle. And we have had that conversation with CPDC, and they have indicated that their request is fairly conservative, and it is what they need to fulfill the requirements for a local contribution, which is required for the low-income housing tax credits. Local contribution has been defined by the state and the people that issue these credits as something that will have a substantial impact on their operating statement. So it's not just waiving the refuse fee or not just waiving stormwater fee, for example. It has to be fairly substantive in its size, and it has to have an impact on the operating statement. So they've assured me, and they're going back and looking at their numbers again, that their request will be reasonable. The number that I have in the email that we sent you earlier is just an estimate, so it may be higher or lower. We have not seen their formal request, but that was pulled from the notes that we took in the last conversation that we had with them.
I see two additional lights. Remember, we have one item after this item.
We haven't gone to midnight.
We're not going to midnight.
I don't want you to go to midnight.
Councilmember Clay.
I looked up the Essex House. Of the 137 units that they have, they have 11 that are LIXI units and 11 that are home units. So if they have more affordable, encumbered affordable units than that, they should come prepared with those numbers, because that's all that's online, which is a small percentage of their units. And I noted that they bought the property in 1994, and so I'd like to know how long they're currently encumbered to provide affordability for those units, in addition to whatever else additional they're going to be leveraging with this new refinance.
They are talking about, yeah, they are talking about doing
I didn't, I didn't want to tell me about it now.
So it's a fairly substantive number that would happen, so to say.
Councilmember Snipper.
Well, that raises the issue, what, haven't they been under the city's rent stabilization law all this time?
If they are governed by a regulatory agreement
They're exempt.
And they submit an application for exemption, they are exempt from rent stabilization. So right now, I believe they are exempt from rent stabilization. They are, however, paying property taxes to the city. There is a pilot in place that the county issued when they first acquired the property. So they're going back and asking for a pilot from the city as well.
Could you clarify why they're exempt from our rent stabilization?
Because they have an agreement that regulates how much rent can be charged for units occupied by individuals of defined incomes.
That's the 11 or 7 or whatever. So in this case, they've not been
Because, well, it's 11 and 11. So because 22 of the units of the total 137 units that are offered in the property are some, that's not what it says on their, on their chart. So they're, yeah, the rest of them are exempt, and they can be rented.
Wow, I didn't realize that was a way out of
Well, but they have a high percentage of people who live there that are on voucher housing and things like that would exempt them anyway.
And that was a decision of an earlier council, right?
Correct. The way the ordinance is written now is if I had a 150-unit property and had an agreement with a governmental entity that only one of them be occupied by a person who fell within certain income limits, and I charged them only so much rent, the entire building could be exempted from rent stabilization.
Whoa.
That's one of the things we want to bring back to you to consider, reconsider.
Because it seems like a tremendous, I mean, they're selling the, I mean, the points of these things, as in this Essex House in particular is a good example, they're selling the tax credits to private investors who are going to make a lot of money, essentially. And that's what MHP does. These are, you know, wonderful business investments for those folks, because they recycle those tax credits. And it feels to me like the, you know, the renters in Tacoma Park are getting the short end of the stick as a result.
I'm not prepared to have that conversation, but I do know that
Longer conversation.
The low-income housing tax credit programs is one of the few financing programs that are still in place right now that will allow for the purchaser refinancing of properties and significant renovation projects like that, which is being proposed.
Councilmember Wright.
Two quick things. One, this is a county entity. So this is the county coming to us, asking us for a tax rate.
CPDC is a private, nonprofit housing provider.
So they're like MHP. They're not, they're not actually part of the county in any way.
They are not part of the county in any way at all.
They're not even quasi-county?
No.
Okay. And, Lynn, did you say that they have, they use Section 8 vouchers to finance some of the units?
They don't use them to finance some of the unit. They just have people that are on Section 8 vouchers.
Yeah, but Section 8 voucher would, you can pay a certain percentage of your income, 30% of your income, and then the rest is covered to take you to market rate.
Correct.
So why would we be giving them a subsidy if they're getting market rate rents through the voucher program?
That was my, that's another question.
Well
Different guys.
It depends on who's living in the property at that
But in any case, if it's
At that time. There's no guarantee, just because they accept people who have Section 8 vouchers, and a lot of people choose to go there, those vouchers are portable.
Yeah.
I don't know if, they also have project-based Section 8, and it doesn't say on their sheet anything about, so I don't know how many project-based Section 8 units they might have. I don't know if Linda knows or not.
We can, we can get that information.
But it's not, their sheet just says 11 home units and then 11 LIXI units.
The other thing I would like to point out is that for the voucher program, it's not market rate rents that
It's fair market rents.
It's fair market rents, which oftentimes are less than the market might otherwise bear because of this long formula that HUD uses.
Except in College Park for four-bedroom houses.
Yes, this is weird. There's all these weird things.
They can be beneficial to landlords because it's a very steady income.
But basically, the Essex
The voucher program is good for landlords.
The Essex House can't get this set of tax credits without the city providing something.
Correct. I disagree.
And it has to do with this kind of thing.
How would they protect more
Because we're not the only locality. Does that mean if they do business in Silver Spring that they can't get anything because there's not a city entity there to provide them with the money? What if you had a giant tower building in one of these tiny little cities that has no budget and couldn't afford to give them $13,000 a year? Would they not get to build there? I don't think that they have to have a Tacoma Park investment.
You're finished.
I think so, either.
Yeah. And Councilmember Clay, we've had that conversation with the state, and I'll be glad to share what we learned from them. It's considered to be the most local, so in a municipality like Tacoma Park, it would be Tacoma Park.
Let me just point out that any discussion about affordable housing can make you happy.
That's definitely true.
We have a final item on our agenda. It's a special section item, single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with a consultant to assist with matters related to the proposal of relocation of Washington Adventist Hospital. It's been moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. It is a single reading ordinance, therefore, it's going to be a roll call vote. But first, is there any discussion? Is there any public comment? Will a clerk please call a roll?
Amy Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
That item passes unanimously. That's our last round of business we urge.
Hey, we made it by 11:30.
I just want to say, under the state's own laws, counties and
Turn the mic off.
We're over. I can say whatever I want.